Super short minutes.
I, I. Messed it up myself more than once.
Oh, it is six o'clock. Just waiting for Natalie and then.
I'm here.
Oh. Well, in that case. And Miles, is Miles here? Just on another page? There he is. Couldn't start without you. All right. It looks like we can begin. So, welcome everybody to the December 15th meeting of the Eureka City Council. Um. This is going to be a fun meeting. We're going to open up with a roll call with our city council currently, and then we are looking forward to bringing in a full house after that. So, I will make a change to the agenda to move item C1 up to the top by after all.
Mayor Seaman.
Here.
Councilmember Castellano.
Here.
Councilmember Arroyo.
Here.
And Councilmember Bergel.
Here.
Excellent. And so, at this point, we want to, we have a resolution declaring canvas of returns and results of the general municipal election. Do I have, do I, who makes, do I have to presentation or do I just make, ask for recommendation? This is the first time I hear this part.
Mayor, I can give you a short presentation. As you know, the county elections office has 30 days to confirm the election results, and therefore, we received that on, I think, December 4th. And what you have before us is the actual results and the certification of the election. You will be implementing officers or the, the two officers that have been elected are, for the second ward is Katie Molten, for the fourth ward Scott Bauer. In addition to that, we have certifications for Measure C, which is ranked choice voting, and Measure H are supplemental transaction and use tax. And so, therefore, we just need an affirmative vote by the majority of the council, which is the three that we have in forum tonight.
All right. Do we have any comments before that or do we just go straight into the resolution?
I, we did not have anyone from the public sign up for comment.
No, I just meant, so we all welcomed them after we spread them in, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, would somebody like to make a recommendation to adopt the resolution?
I move staff recommendation.
All right. And Councilmember Bergel, would you like to second that? All right, all in favor?
All right, Councilmember Castellano.
Hi.
Councilmember Arroyo.
Hi.
Councilmember Bergel.
Yes.
Three yes votes, motion carries.
All right. Well, with that, I would like to then invite each of you to take oath of office, and then we will begin our meeting with a full council. I'll do it one at a time. So, we will start with Katie Molten from Ward 2. So, would you mind holding up your right hand? I, Katie Molten, do solemnly affirm.
I, Katie Molten, do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bring the, sorry, small, I will bring the faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
That I will bring the faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the city charter, or the Charter of the City of Eureka.
And the Charter of the City of Eureka.
That I take the obligation freely, without any mental, oh, I'm sorry, reservation.
That I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
That I will well and faithfully discharge.
Duties upon which I'm about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
In the capacity of city council member, Ward 2 of the City of Eureka.
In the capacity of city council member, Ward 2 of the City of Eureka.
And with that, I believe you are officially a council member. Yay! We're very happy to have you onboard.
Thank you. Very, very happy to be here.
Excellent. And so, now we will move on to Ward 4, and we're welcoming Scott Bauer. So, Scott, raise your hand. I, Scott Bauer.
I, Scott Bauer.
Do solemnly affirm that I will support the con, support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And to the State of California.
And to the State of California.
And the Charter City, and the Charter of the City of Eureka.
And the Charter of the City of Eureka.
That I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservations.
And I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservations.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
That I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
In the capacity of city council member, Ward 4, to the City of Eureka.
In the capacity of city council member, Ward 4, of the City of Eureka.
Excellent. Yay! Everybody's clapping. It's just me you can hear.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, and we will do something fun for you guys when we can all get together. I like that they put that without evasion in there. I didn't remember that before. There have been a few times I want to run away. But you can't now because you swore to it. Does anybody want to say anything to welcome our new council members? Councilmember Arroyo.
I'm just so thrilled to be able to work with both of you. I am fortunate to know you both from other contexts in our lives here in this community, and I'm so thrilled that you're here with us as colleagues and helping do the important and difficult work of governing the city. So, welcome aboard and excited to work together.
Anybody, Councilmember Castellano?
Sure. Yeah, it's, I think it's going to be a good time for the City of Eureka. You know, I appreciate both of you and the efforts you took in your campaigns and, you know, the way and the work you do in other capacities in your lives to contribute to our community. So, you know, as Councilmember Arroyo mentioned, I look forward to working with you in the years to come.
Councilmember Bergel.
I just wanted to say welcome, and hang on, it's going to be a fun ride, I promise. There's never a dull moment. Well, there might be a couple once in a while, but don't get too used to that.
I was going to say you'll be great before him. And I also want to emphasize that we're just really delighted to have you onboard and very much looking forward to working with you. And with that, we will start our meeting in our official city business. Oh, I turned this over. And, yes ma'am?
I was just going to do a new roll call.
Yes, please.
All right, Councilmember Castellano.
Here.
Councilmember Molten.
Here.
Councilmember Arroyo.
Here.
Councilmember Bauer.
Here.
Councilmember Bergel.
Here.
Thank you.
All right. You're officially all a part of the meeting. So, at this point, would you please join me for the pledge of allegiance? Your first official act. Do we have a picture? Oh. That's your Facebook page. All right. Here we go. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, for all. Most awkward part of all Zoom meetings, in which that happens. And, all right. And the next item on our agenda is report out from the closed session. Do we have anything to report out from our closed session? Mr. City Attorney.
Mayor, no reportable actions were taken in closed session.
Thank you very much. Um. The next item is mayor's announcements. I don't have a lot today, except for to say, I was so thrilled that the ECEA, the Eureka City Employees Association, chose Champions for Children as their theme for their float, and they used lighted artwork that was created by preschoolers at, at the Little Saplings Preschool that they had on display during the parade, and it was adorable, and I was so thrilled that they did that. It just, it just warmed your heart, something really happy to see the great artwork that's coming out from our youngest kids. And then, the other thing is, this is the home for the holidays, voting has opened up. We have maps available, so you can go to City of Eureka website or Facebook page or Instagram page to get a map of all of the decorated lights that entered. So, you can go and have a festive tour of the City of Eureka, greater city of Eureka. And I hear we've had over 300 votes so far already with people who have submitted their entry in terms of voting for who their favorite is. So, it is going to be a very exciting, exciting contest, I think. And it's really less about the contest and more about just getting out and enjoying the season. So, thank you all for doing that. And that is all I have to report today. The most important thing, the biggest announcement we've already accomplished, being we brought in our two new council members. And we will move on to the next part of our agenda, which is public comment. Do we have any public comment today?
Mayor, no one has signed up for general public comment.
Thank you very much. So, then.
Mayor, it looks like we have a member of the public who did raise their hand.
Oh.
No, sorry, I didn't, they had notified me. We do have some members for transportation and safety, but if they're on here.
I had actually written in to be a part of D4 on the agenda, so I'm happy to wait.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So, the public, so we don't have any general public, but we just have it for the items. And in that case, we will move on to the consent calendar. In the consent calendar, I understand we want to pull item B3, which is the Director of Community Services Employment Agreement Amendment. Is there anything else that anybody wants to pull? If not, can I get a motion to approve the agenda, the consent calendar without that item?
I'll make motion to approve the consent calendar, except for item B3.
All righty. Thank you. Can we have a vote on that, please?
Councilmember Castellano.
Hi.
Councilmember Molten.
Hi.
Councilmember Arroyo.
Hi.
Councilmember Bauer.
Hi.
Councilmember Bergel.
Yes.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
All right. And now, we get to, sometimes you pull an agenda item because somebody has a problem with it, and sometimes you pull an agenda item because you just want to have an opportunity to talk about it. And I think that's what this one is about. So, I will ask City Manager Slattery to talk to us about the recommendation to authorize and execute employment agreement with Donna Wood for the position of Community Services Director.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Mayor and council members, and welcome new council members. Staff definitely looks forward to working with you and getting your priorities taken care of. Mayor Seaman kind of blew my cover there. I was going to start this off with, you know, there's some council members that had some concerns about my opinion of Donna, but I guess that's over.
I'm sorry, we didn't, we didn't arrange that beforehand, or I wouldn't have done that.
Donna has worked for the cities in a full-time capacity since October of 1999. She worked for years before that, starting off as a rec leader in our programming. She is responsible for a lot of the programs that a lot of the childrens for decades have been growing up to in the city of Eureka. She has grown vastly professionally over the last few years. I've been working for the city since 2006, and she was obviously there then, and I was working in the same department with her for probably four years, and she was at a pretty high level, and I'd never met her. So, when I first met her, I asked her, it's finally about time you came out of the closet, and now that's our inside joke because she was not very visible, and she's come out, and she's grown so much over the years that we've been working more closely together. She worked as the Deputy Community Services Director for the years that I was there. She has grown areas of responsibilities from getting into harbor, getting into solid waste and diversion, understanding all the different divisions. She's even taking on now a lot more of the zoo responsibilities. She's definitely demonstrated a ability to learn on the fly and to do everything as well as she did when she was just a part of rec. On a personal level, I can say that I wouldn't be in this position today if it wasn't for Donna. She was integral in getting me to develop some of my leadership skills, as well as my collaborating skills, and I really appreciate that. And so, staff recommends appointing Donna to the Community Services Director position.
All right. Does anybody have any, any questions about this? No? Do we have any public comment about this?
Mayor, I did not receive a quest, request for comment.
All right. So, I'll bring it back for comments. Anybody on staff? Councilmember Castellano, on staff, on the council?
Well, I'm very excited, Donna, for you to take this position, and I just want to acknowledge how much I respect the work that you've done for the City of Eureka and your leadership and human-centered thinking, and also your, you know, just capacity to really follow through exciting projects for the city. I think I first met you in, or, you know, in working on the Skywalk, some of the planning around that, and it's, it's been really exciting to see the projects that you've really put a lot of energy into bringing forward.
Anybody else? If not, I'll ask Donna if she wants to say anything. I mean, I'm sorry, Director Wood.
I think Councilmember Bergel.
Well, Donna, I just, I really, a heartfelt congratulations. I, just in the short time I've known you, you have grown so much, and I just so appreciate the joyous energy you bring and the willingness to collaborate with people, difficult, not difficult. You have a gift for that that I really appreciate, and I've learned a lot from you in that regard. So, thank you for always being you. I mean, that's the thing, you're always you, and that, that is, that is, that's a gift, and I'm just so grateful that I know you, and I'm so grateful that you're in this position where you can move forward in so many positive directions in our city with our support. So, congratulations.
Councilmember Arroyo.
I want to just echo that and say that I really think, in many ways, you know, if you were to look at the city as a body and use that as a metaphor, so many parts make that up, but your, your work and your department is, in, in, in many ways, the heart. And so, I'm extremely grateful for that and grateful for all the growth that I've seen in community services over the years, and excited that you are going to take the torch and run with it. And I love how much fun you are and how you really bring your own personality to your work, too. That's something I really hope to see as, as employers, that we, you know, really support people to be the very best that they are and can be and to be themselves in their work. So, you really exhibit that, and I'm very proud to be able to move this forward or to be part of moving this forward tonight.
Very nice. Councilmember Molten.
First time on the floor, and I'm very happy that it is to be able to speak in support of Donna Wood. I met you first when we were trying to get some public art to happen, and I want to echo the sentiment that your work is human-centered. I think that, you know, I value public art and its inclusion in our local culture and the fact that you're willing to work towards that, and to understand that art encompasses lots of things and that there's lots of different sorts of personalities and cultures in our town and that our public art should reflect that. I got that from you, and I appreciate that, and I think, I hope that the people of the citizens of Eureka appreciate that, too.
So, Director Wood. Have we made you cry yet? That was, that was City Manager Slattery's goal.
I am trying to hold it together, to be honest. I'll keep it short. It's been almost 25 years that I've worked for this city, and I've loved it from the jump, and I am so excited for where we're headed. I love this team. I love this town. Wow, what an honor. I'm absolutely thrilled. Let's do this.
Yay. I think we're going to see great things happening. So, one more addition to the, well, you're not a new addition to the family, you're just a promoted addition to the family, so yay. All right. So, with that, do I have a motion to, to recommend the, and authorize the city manager to execute the employment agreement with Donna Wood?
I'll move that we proceed with staff recommendation. Kim, it looks like you wanted, okay, sorry. I keep jumping ahead of Kim, but I think it was just her mic was off.
So, I'll second, and I would just say, stay away from dodgeball.
Wait, now you have to explain that.
I would love to explain that.
All right, this is the discussion part.
Very Donna Wood way, we started when we first took over the department and changed to Parks and Recreation. We had an employee appreciation day that was just get out, have fun, do different things. On, I believe it was the second year that we had it. We did a department-wide kickball tournament, kickball game, and Donna was very gung-ho. So, she gets up to the plate, she hits a dribbler to short, and as she is running it out as hard as she possibly can, and took one for the team, straight off her feet, directly into a chest slash face plant on the first baseline. Took it like a champ. I believe broken ribs were involved. Two broken ribs, and, I mean, even she was laughing, even though she was in so much pain. But, so then I believe it was for Christmas, we do a white elephant gift, and former project manager Millet put together a big poster. And because after she hit the sand, you know, we had groomed it, and so it had a perfect imprint of the side of her face and her shoulder. So, we took a picture of that and put it on a big poster and put on, below the motto of leave your mark on the world. And so, that poster is up in the, in the muni right now, and yes, we get good laughs out of it.
That's the kind of commitment we expect from our directors.
Yeah. I can't believe you just shared that story.
So, we've got a motion, we have a second, we had some fun discussion. Can we take a vote now?
Councilmember Castellano.
Hi.
Councilmember Molten.
Hi.
Councilmember Arroyo.
Hi.
Councilmember Bauer.
Hi.
Councilmember Bergel.
Absolutely, yes.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
Congratulations, Donna. All right. We are going to move on to our next item, which is ordinances and resolutions. And we are on the, the second or second and a half reading of the title, I don't know, 15 Chapter 155 Tree Removal Bill. Do we have a presentation on that?
We do. Can you hear me okay?
I can, great.
Yay. So, good evening, Mayor and council. At the last meeting, council introduced an ordinance to amend the current tree, the current tree removal ordinance that we have in our zoning code. And for our new council members, this amendment was part of the June 2020 zoning code update. It applies to the inland portion of the city, and it only applies to residential zones. And we have both inland and coastal portions of the city, and each portion has its own zoning code. The residential portions of the city on the inland side include all of the area in yellow shown on your screen, as well as this area here and this one here. So, our current tree removal ordinance lists 15 different types of trees that are defined by the zoning code as commercial trees. If you want to remove any of the 15 types of trees included in that list, and the tree has a diameter of three feet or more, measured at breast height, which is four and a half feet above the ground, and you're in a residential zone district, then you need a tree removal permit from Development Services. Trees included in that list that are less than three feet in diameter can be removed without a permit. In the current code, there are no exemptions from the requirement to obtain a tree removal permit for removal of three-foot diameter or greater commercial trees that may be either in the footprint or within 15 feet of footprint of a proposed structure or driveway access to the structure. There are also no exemptions for trees that are hazardous because maybe they're diseased or they're causing damage to structures or sidewalks, and there's no exemption for trees that might conflict with solar access, which is necessary since solar installation is now required by the building code for many types of new construction. The current ordinance references commercial trees. The proposed ordinance regulates protected trees. The current ordinance defines a commercial tree as one of 15 trees on a list that has a diameter at breast height of three feet, and the proposed ordinance defines a protected tree as the original 15 trees included on the list, plus the addition of six trees, and the diameter has changed from three feet to two feet at breast height. Both the additional trees in the diameter were recommended by Keep Eureka Beautiful. The current ordinance does not require a tree removal permit for any size tree species that's not on the list and any of the 15 commercial trees that are on the list. And any of the fifteen commercial trees that are on the list, but are less than three foot diameter at breast height. The proposed ordinance allows by right removal of any size tree not on the list. The twenty-one protected trees that are on the list, if they're less than two feet diameter at breast height. As well as any size protected tree that's within fifteen feet of a proposed structure or in the footprint of the road. And removal or reduction of mass of a hazardous tree when certain city staff, in consultation with a registered professional forester or arborist, determine the tree is hazardous and presents an immediate danger or threat. The requirement to obtain a use permit to remove more than five trees in a ten-year period remains, except hazardous trees are now exempted. As are trees in the building sites, as I just mentioned. As far as who can issue a tree permit, it's not specified in the current code, but the proposed ordinance names the directors, the review authority for tree removal permits. And the planning commission for use permits for tree removal. The current ordinance does not contain any findings, and the proposed ordinance requires findings to support why the tree should be allowed. To be removed. And the current ordinance does not provide for any conditions of approval, but examples are included in the proposed ordinance. Lastly, the proposed ordinance contains language pretending to bird nesting season. So with that, staff recommends council adopt the amendment to the tree removal ordinance as shown in your staff report, and here's a recommended motion to adopt the ordinance, and I'm happy to answer any questions that I can.
Alright, do we have, have any questions? Oh, Councilmember Bauer.
Yeah, thank you for, that was a great presentation. I just have a couple of questions. Did I read that a planning commission will make the decision or will give the approval for that tree removal? Is that correct?
So for the removal of the first five trees. In a ten-year period, the director can authorize that tree removal.
Okay.
Once you get to the sixth tree or more, then you're gonna need a use permit and the planning commission would act on that.
Okay, that seems fair. And then as far as the bird nest, bird nesting season goes. What did we put down for that? What's the time period?
It just refers to bird nesting season. We didn't put a time period, so it's whatever Fish and Wildlife would apply.
No, yeah, I was just thinking of, we should probably put in US Fish and Wildlife Services. Recommendations or what they consider the bird nesting season. It's, it's pretty long, but just to make it clear to, you know, citizens as to when they can remove a tree. I think that would be a useful addition. And then as far as a two-foot diameter at breast height, what was the reasoning given to, to reduce it from three to two?
So staff had originally proposed reducing it from three feet to sixteen inches, but Keep Eureka Beautiful came back and recommended the two-foot diameter. Staff had actually done some research with other cities surrounding our area and throughout the state of California, and they really varied as far as the diameter of the trees that were included in their tree ordinances. Some of them were down to like six inches, others were up at three or four feet, so we just kind of. Staff picked the number of sixteen inches, Keep Eureka Beautiful came back with two, and we settled on that.
Okay, that seems reasonable. That's all I have. Thank you.
Alright, any other questions? Did we have any public comment on this item?
Mayor, we did not.
Alright, so I'll bring it back for comments or motion. Anybody? Councilmember Arroyo.
I just wanted to understand a little bit more about what the insertion would be about language for bird nesting season. Would it be to specify the actual dates in our. Update to our zoning code or to refer to another resource in our code? What, and Councilmember Bauer just specifically wondering, you know, what you were thinking there, and then would love to hear from staff as well.
Yeah, I think the rules and off the top of my head, I think it's February fifteenth to August fifteenth. Is what the United States Fish and Wildlife Services service uses and pretty much all, all government agencies will use that. So I think. That's about what it is, and you can look it up, somebody can look it up real quick and just say that's the time period. And I'll just say this, though, it, it really narrows your ability to remove trees basically from August fifteenth through the winter. And this is where I get kind of torn, too, because, you know, a lot of trees just won't have nesting birds, you know, so. Having that flexibility is. Yeah, I guess if nobody's really that concerned and commenting on it from, you know, the public, maybe there's not much concern, but. Some trees are habitat and some, you know, tall redwood that's in the middle of the city probably wouldn't have nesting birds, you know, so. But. It's having the nesting bird season in there would probably be the most safest route.
Councilmember Molton, Councilmember Castellano.
Would it be possible to say during nesting season that a survey is required? That we have to get a, somebody to look in the tree? Someone like a biologist? We have to do this for the kinetic race. You have to get a biologist to go survey the route, make sure that we're not gonna run over any snowy plover.
Principal Planner Guts, do you want to answer that?
Sure. The time period that Councilmember Bauer indicated is one that we often have in our secret documents, so. I think that that would definitely make sense for us to use that language if council wanted to add that. And I would think that. If somebody can provide a bird survey and. Show that there are no nesting birds either in the tree or in the adjacent trees where the tree is gonna be felled, then I think we could probably still allow them to remove a tree.
Would that, would you need them to go through a special process for that? Do you need to change the language or?
If council would like that language in the code, then we can certainly add it. I think that it could just be the policy of the department. That we can let folks know that if they want to provide the bird survey, they can.
Councilmember Castellano, do you have a comment?
I'm fine with it being the policy within the department, as long as that's, you know, clear enough for everyone. Those dates are February first to August fifteenth. For the official bird nesting season.
Alright, any comments or do we have a motion? Councilmember Bergel.
I would support the language, but I would like to have something in there that there is a caveat. And maybe that is through the policy, because that is a very long time, and if you've got something that's problematic or that needs to be removed for specific purposes. It would seem that there would need to be a way to access that.
Councilmember Bauer and then Councilmember Arroyo.
Yeah, I, I think what we would say is, you know, you have the bird nesting season. If you wish to. If you have a reason to remove a tree within the bird nesting season, then you have to do a survey. And that, you know, so that's kind of your, your sideboards. Here's the time period, you can do it after that or outside the season, but if you need to do it within the season, then you have to do a survey.
Councilmember Arroyo.
Well, I will hazard an attempt to move this forward with that amendment, so. I just wanted to, before I go ahead and read it, ask our city attorney if. I, I do like the idea of including the language in the zoning code update and not just on a departmental level, just so that it's clear for people who look this up. That there is the alternative, but I wanted to ask, is that. Is that minor enough to include in the second reading without having to go back to the drawing board on this?
I think it is. If we, if we can get the language right tonight at the meeting itself, I think that's a relatively minor exception that. Is within our ability on second reading.
Okay, so I moved that the city council waive reading, read by title only and adopt bill number nine nine two dash C S to approve the tree removal portion of the June twenty twenty. Zoning code update with the addition of language specifying that if. A tree needs to be removed during the bird nesting season with the dates given, as said tonight, was it August through? February, something? But, okay, we can get that right. Okay, I'm sorry, what, Councilmember Castellano?
February first through August fifteenth.
Got it, thank you. February first through August fifteenth, I had it flip-flopped out in my brain. That then we will, that if someone needs to remove a tree during that period of time, that they shall then. Get a biological survey. To ensure that they're not impacting birds.
Do I have a second? Councilmember Bergel. Alright, any more discussion? Are we ready for a vote? Sounds like we could vote now.
A quick, quick item, Mayor.
Yes, Mayor, yes, sir.
Councilmember Arroyo used the terminology not impacting birds. And I think. That may be almost impossible to show if you're taking down a tree. That, that it's not impacting. Bird nesting capacity or something like that. We'll, we'll find the right language for it.
I think the intent is that there's not actively a nest. Is that, that seems. More in line with the intent of this.
If that's the case, we could just say not impacting nesting birds.
Okay. Yeah, not impacting nesting birds or. Existing nests or something along those lines. Whatever you think is most clear in that regard. Is that, does that suffice? Do you think Principal Planner Guts?
I do. I think I'm clear on what council would like.
Alright, thank you.
And Councilmember Bergel, are you okay with that change?
I would second that.
Okay, then I think we could go back to vote.
Councilmember Castellano.
Aye.
Councilmember Molton.
Aye.
Councilmember Arroyo.
Aye.
Councilmember Bauer.
Aye.
Councilmember Bergel.
Yes.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
Nice job. Nice job to the new council. Jumping in with both feet. I like it. And we are ready to move on to our next item, which is. The item C three supplemental transaction and use tax, and I believe City Manager Slattery will do this, or are we gonna have Director Malar? Or?
City Manager Powell.
I'm so sorry.
Oh, no worries.
Manager Powell.
As you know, we placed a supplemental transaction and use tax on the ballot. And when we did that, we introduced it as an ordinance, and the voters then provided approval and gave approval and, and. We are now moving this forward officially to adopt the supplemental transaction and use tax into our muni code. The tax will begin on July first of two thousand twenty-one.
Anybody have any questions? Do we have any public comment on this item?
No, Mayor, we have not had a request.
Alright, so I'll bring it back for comments or motion. Councilmember Bergel.
Well, I'm so grateful this passed. So I suggest we waive reading, read by title only and adopt bill number nine eight two dash C S. Amending chapter thirty-five relating to the supplemental transaction and use tax to become effective July first, two thousand twenty-one.
I'll second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second and a discussion. It looks like we are ready for a vote.
Councilmember Castellano.
Aye.
Councilmember Molton.
Aye.
Councilmember Arroyo.
Aye.
Councilmember Bauer.
Aye.
Councilmember Bergel.
Yes.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
Excellent. And now we're ready to move on to the next part of our agenda, reports and action items. And I see Director Malar has turned on his camera because he is ready to give us a report on our revenue update for two thousand twenty-one.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council, and I would like to introduce myself to Councilmember Molton and Councilmember Bauer. My name is Lay Malar. I'm the city's finance director. So I'm gonna share my screen. So tonight's presentation is a fiscal year twenty twenty-one revenue update that is mainly about sales tax. Why sales tax? It makes up roughly sixty percent of the general fund budget and supports the city's core services. Sales tax is very sensitive to the economic health of the city and often follows the trends we see at the state and national level. When times are good, we expect this revenue to increase, and during a recession, we expect this revenue to decrease. Since sales tax can be considered an economic indicator, I've included two more data sets that help us get a bigger picture of the local economy. This includes the housing market and unemployment. The purpose of the next section is to compare the city and the county's sales tax to other jurisdictions within the state. This includes median or large and medium-sized counties, northern California counties, and northern California cities. At the end of the presentation, I will give an update on T O T tax, the new sales tax forecast. And lastly, where I think we will be with the general fund come six thirty, two thousand twenty-one. So to begin with the economic indicators, I will start with the, the housing market. So this is county-level data. That is because I think that data set represents the market better than Eureka. And also with unemployment data, we do, we do not have city-level unemployment data, so I will stick to the county level. So this chart, it tells you two things. On the left-hand side, that is the median price, and median is a way to capture an average. If you list out a set of numbers in, from lowest to highest, the median is the number in the middle. So if your average home price is two hundred and fifty thousand. Then you know that half the sales were above two hundred and fifty thousand and the other half were below. That, you know, over time, the median or median price is represented by that orange line. On the right side, I have number of home sales, and that's represented with those blue bars. The data begins at the beginning of two thousand eighteen, and it ends at the end of September of two thousand twenty. As you can see, that at the beginning of two thousand eighteen, the median price was two hundred and seventy-five thousand. Most recently, the average price was three hundred and thirty thousand. Over this time period, that represents roughly a twenty percent increase. The other thing to take notice of is how many home sales happened in the third quarter of two thousand twenty. We saw over four hundred and sixty-one homes sell on the market. If I took an average over this time period, the average number of home sales was about three hundred and thirty-four, so you can tell that. That four hundred number is well above average and likely leads to increases in prices. Next, we'll look at unemployment data. So on the left, you can see the number of people unemployed, and that's represented by, I believe, the blue. Bar chart, and then on the right, that's the unemployment rate. But as you can see, at the beginning of two thousand twenty, we saw a record low, and I think this was a historical low of three point nine percent. And very quickly after the shutdowns began. And very quickly after the shutdowns began, that number grew to over thirteen percent. But as of today. We're currently around six point six percent. And actually, that is the seventeenth lowest, uh, unemployment rate. Of counties within California, and there are fifty eight counties within California. When we compare ourselves to the state, the state is actually at nine percent unemployment. So we're doing better than the state. And the U S or the nation overall is at six point seven percent, so we're actually doing better than average. The next section is, uh, sales tax revenues for the Q three twenty twenty. The revenue figures I will be showing you tonight are point of sale receipts. Um, these are transactions that happen at the business location. It doesn't include items that people purchase online from big distributors like Amazon. We'll, we'll begin with the large and medium sized counties. As you can see, when we compared two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty. A lot of these counties saw negative growth. And in fact, the two of the largest counties in California and the largest county in the, their, the largest county in the United States saw double digit declines. But they didn't see declines at the same level as San Francisco County or San Francisco City because they're the same thing. San Francisco lost over half of their sales tax revenue as compared to two thousand nineteen. Next, we move on to Northern California counties, our neighbors. Um, as you can see, there are really two stories right here. Uh, we'll start down south, uh, both Sonoma and Napa saw declines. And especially Napa County, who have the big tourism industry. And then north of Napa. Including ourselves and our neighbors, we actually saw increases. So what's unique about this time is that, you know, certain areas are doing very well and others are doing very poorly. Most of the time, we see trends that kind of correlate with each other. So if the state goes up, I typically expect the county and the city to go up as well. Here we have our local jurisdiction. Here's us. So as we were doing the budget, I was not expecting to see any increases throughout fiscal year. But, uh, you know, this is great news, we saw an increase of three percent, which is actually pretty good. When we compare the local jurisdictions to other cities on the North Coast. You can kind of see how well we did in comparison. You know, places that see a lot of tourism like Napa and Santa Cruz saw big decline. As well as the other, uh, cities within the wine country. So finally, we'll go into the last section, which is T O T and the updated sales tax, sales tax forecast. The T O T or transient occupancy tax, also known as bed tax, is generated at the hotels. It is separate from sales tax. Um, and again, it was a relatively pleasant surprise. I was not expecting P O T in the first quarter, because this is July through September, our summer months. Uh, to do better than two thousand nineteen, but we did see an increase. Next, we have our revenue projection for twenty twenty one, and this is Bradley Burns, so this is only one of our three sales tax revenue streams. But back in February. Prior to COVID. Uh, we were anticipating roughly ten point three million in sales tax this fiscal year. At the end of March, as the shutdowns were happening, uh, that was downgraded by ten percent. And then again in May, uh, it went down another five percent. But as of November, um, we're actually anticipating a one percent decrease from that February figure. Which is awesome, I was expecting to lose over a million and a half dollars from our Bradley Burns debt. So when we look at the bottom line. You know, we first will start with the adopted budget, this is where we thought we would be back in June. Uh, we cut roughly fourteen percent, which was a huge number. And unfortunately, we couldn't balance the budget, uh, you can see the deficit of roughly half a million dollars. But when I update our sales tax budget, um, you can see the picture completely changes. Now I anticipate a surplus of over one point three million dollars. So this is, I. I'm still baffled, I did not expect this, and we went through a lot of pain because of the forecast. So this is really great news. But there's one thing that's hidden within these numbers. You know, things for, or revenue for certain types of businesses are doing great. They're seeing increases that they haven't seen for years and years. But those are big box stores, those are big businesses that are capturing a lot of this increase. As we can see, when we look downtown or in Old Town, that we've noticed a few more vacancies. A lot of businesses that make up or provide sales tax revenue to the city aren't as doing, or aren't doing as well as some of the bigger players. I think it might be worth our while to take some of this surplus and create a grant program to support the small guys. I would like to refer to our city manager, as we've been discussing ideas, uh, along these lines. And if you have any questions, uh, I would like you to refer those to him about what we could do with the surplus. Uh, other than that, uh, that concludes my presentation tonight, so if there are any questions, um, now is the time to ask.
So, um, I, I do have a question first, this, we still have, um, the winter months before. Before the end of this fiscal year and we're in, Humboldt's always a little bit behind the economic, you know, trends for the rest of the state. How are you feeling going into the next quarter?
Um. I'm not expecting. Increases. Um, but I'm not anticipating the big, uh, declines that we first thought were gonna happen.
All right.
Yeah, who, who really knows? Is my answer, but I'm fairly confident at this point that. We will remain pretty steady in terms of revenue.
Um, yeah, I know everything is unpredictable, I just know there's a lot of, uh. Concern for the, for the winter months now that we've, um, soon as this holiday season is over. Uh, and one other thing, I would love, love, love to see, um. Uh, this presentation for the CERC committee, the COVID Economic Resiliency. Uh, consortium, so I will hook you up and see if we can get you to do, uh, the presentation one day, so that, that's county wide. So you don't need to focus so much on, on the Eureka numbers, but as Eureka goes, um, the county also tends to, so.
Yeah.
Councilmember Castellano.
Let's see, uh, firstly, one question about the median home price, um. I'm just curious if you, you may not have this information, but if you know. In terms of people who are buying homes, like what percentage are, are local, what percentage are from out of the county?
Um, I don't get that information, but I'm sure the realtors would be open with that. And if you're really sophisticated, I think we could pull the, uh. Property tax rolls and kind of trace back where these, or the buyers and where they came from, we really wanted to know. And that, that actually might be a good, um, statistic to kind of identify because it will tell us. Um, you know, if we should anticipate further home price or rises in home prices.
Thanks.
Do you have any other questions, Councilmember Malden?
Uh, it's my totally lay opinion that the increase in T O T revenue is because we're looking at a mass of climate refugees. The people came here to get away from the fires and that we're going to see a population bump. And therefore a rise in housing prices as those same people or people in similar situations choose to move here permanently. To escape the possibility of fires. Uh, in addition to turning some of that extra revenue over to support our local businesses. Which folks coming in from out of the area might ha- not have as much sense of ownership or importance in our local businesses. Not to generalize, but if we could also, um, is there something we can do to. Address increase in home prices and decrease in availability of affordable housing with some of this money? I'm not super familiar with the work the council is doing right now, but, um, the availability of affordable housing is also, I think, going to go down as this revenue comes up.
I, you know what, I think we need to be careful not to overspend because we did see a big deficit last fiscal year. But that said, um, with the new measure H. Um, we might be able to build in. Uh, a line item or, you know, some sort of plan to help, uh, dedicate monies toward that purpose. There's also other things we can do, um, you know, with T O T with like vacation rentals. We can start to set aside a certain amount of money from that, those revenue streams to also help with affordable housing. You know, it, uh, we do have some monies available, uh, already to support a low income housing. And I, I believe we have roughly a million dollars to support development for, uh, people that make under eighty percent of the area median income. So we do have some resources currently available to address that situation.
Council, uh, City Manager Slattery.
So yes, Councilmember Malden, um, we, you know, there's a lot of things going on at the city right now to address the housing issues that we have, um. Uh, Director Malar brought up the fact that we have that redevelopment money that's, um, we've been looking at options for, for using that. Um, we also have the Link Project, which I'm sure you're aware of, where the, it's gonna be a hundred and seven units being built. Um, you know, a lot of the money that we do have that Director Malar is talking about, um, does come available and also through. C D G and, and other types of sources like that, but, um. There's a lot of projects that are gonna be coming up relative to housing and not just, um, low income housing, but there's some other developers that have been. Talking with the city about other projects as well.
Do you have any other questions, Councilmember Arroyo?
Um, I wondered if you, I apologize for not asking this question in advance, Director Malar, so that you could bring this info, but, um. I, I just wondered what your sense is of the cannabis business impact in all of this, um, and, you know. Where, what are we seeing in that, in that sector?
Um. It's surprising how well they're doing compared to what the assumptions were before. Um, you know, we were worried that we were going to permit too many. Um, but I do think we underestimated how many can survive. And based on what's out there right now, they all seem to be doing relatively well. In terms of how much sales stacks they generate, so, you know, I don't know their bottom line, I don't know how much profit they're making, but in terms of sales. Uh, they do relatively well compared to any other type of business, um. And they've certainly added to the city's bottom line, um. So, you know, and that beyond sales stacks, you know, they're fixing up buildings, they're adding jobs, so all, you know. Almost the entirety of the cannabis industry within city limits is been a great thing.
Yeah, just, oh.
No, go ahead, go ahead, Miles.
So we have received, you know, not only the sales tax, but we've gotten over a million dollars in permit fees since two thousand sixteen, since we started. I think the number is, don't quote me on this because I'm probably wrong, sorry, Economic Development Manager Asbury, but I think it's. Twenty five million dollars in investments, um, to fix, um, buildings, um, and also mostly buildings that were unoccupied, so. Um, it has had a huge impact.
And that's what I was gonna ask, when you talked about housing prices going up and housing sales, um, do you have anything comparable for commercial real estate?
No, um, but I imagine that's available.
Anecdotally, I've heard that it's, there has been a lot of movement in that area, but I don't know the numbers, so. Any other questions? Councilmember Arroyo?
I was, um, just gonna note that, you know, I am interested to hear about staff ideas for investing in local businesses, um. I know that some of our programs around economic development support during COVID were. Aimed really specifically at restaurants and food businesses, um, and so I'd just be interested to hear. You know, I don't, I don't know whether this is a future agenda topic or something we were gonna go into tonight, but I'd be interested to hear thoughts on that, um. Of course, I agree that housing is a significant issue, um, but knowing all the pieces that are up in the air and sort of the, the hurt that. Some local businesses are still feeling. Um, and may begin to feel as federal programs diminish, um, you know, I'd be, I'd just be interested to see where we can continue to give those boosts. And, you know, I'm really appreciating our, our local shop, um, focus with our economic development team within the city. Um, but, yeah, I, I would definitely like to keep that on the front burner.
Uh, City Manager Slattery.
So yes, just to clarify and also to get back to Councilmember Malden's point, we do have, um. Rental assistance and utility assistance funding still available from the COVID money that we had, so that's, there's still a small portion of that, and. That can be revisited as well at some point, but as far as Councilmember Arroyo speaking about the, um. Potential grant program, uh, what we intend to do in discussions with Director Malar as well as, um, project man, excuse me, Economic Development Manager, Manager Asbury. Um, they've been doing outreach to all of the local businesses continually, both, um, uh. Economic Development Technician Tyson, as well as Asbury, um, have been in many conversations with the local businesses. And, um, we plan on putting that together and bringing back a, a, a program for, for helping out those businesses and. How we got to the idea for the, for that program, and we do that at the next council meeting. Uh, I would like to say, you know, I don't know if Director Malar put a number on it, but you know, all of that money. When we did do this budgeting, because I'm sure I'm gonna hear a lot about this, but we, we budgeted at a deficit and we did reach into reserves, so. While that is good, we, we went in with a, a, a budget that was not good, and we dipped into reserves in order to get. Into a budget that was not good, so, um, while this is great news, we're not, uh. Rolling in it, I guess you could say, but we would bring, um, you know, back something for council to consider and, and give you the, um. Some of the research that we did to come up with that program. So we were thinking somewhere around, around three hundred thousand or something like that to make that available. Um, for this grant program and we'll, you know. Frame that grant program based on that amount to see, so that we can help as many businesses as possible.
Thank you, I'm definitely excited about that, and I, I was also thinking to comment along the lines of like, what about the cuts we had to make? So, um, yeah, I, I realize we're not, it's always exciting to hear, we might have more money than we thought, but, um, in this case, I think it's, um. It's more complex than that, so, thank you though, this is a good report.
Yeah. Uh, did we have any other questions, Councilmember Castellano?
Oh, no, I, I'm just ready for comments.
Okay, I know I'm ready for comments too, but I need to wait. There, if we had done with questions, I will ask if we have any public comment on this.
No, Mayor, we did not have a request.
All right. All right. And I would like, I will get to Councilmember Castellano, but the city of Arcata is working on a CDBG forgivable loan program for job retention. And they've, they were just talking about it yesterday and they said they're willing to share all of their details. So if you're interested in considering forgivable loans so that you make sure that the businesses do what they say they're going to do and then you let them have the grant money, and they would be happy to share their information, I am sure. Councilmember Castellano?
Let's see, um, I definitely support supporting local businesses. I, I do like the idea of the forgivable loan program and, and I do want to continue to monitor what we have in the, you know, eviction prevention fund. You know, just because I, I know those funds are getting lower, so I, I think if those funds are depleted, we should definitely revisit what's available there. I, I do also want to just caution against getting over ambitious with expenditures, you know, because what I've seen or what I've heard forecast is that, you know, there's potential for a three to four-year recession that we're entering into and so I'm definitely thankful that we're, we're doing better than we thought, but I do want to be responsible about making sure we can meet our needs going into the future. I also, you know, it hasn't come up yet in this conversation, but I've been in, received quite a bit of feedback from the public lately about desiring more of, of a parks, maintenance presence in the old town, downtown kind of business area. And so that's something too that I think I, I would support seeing some funding for those kinds of things, which, which in a way also, you know, support our businesses, right? So, so just to put that on the plate as well. I don't feel like we need to necessarily be in a rush to, to spend money, right? I mean, we're just kind of forecasting kind of areas of interest.
Any other comments? Oh, go ahead, Director.
Am I allowed to comment right now?
Yeah, you, I'll, I will allow that and then we'll ask, have Councilmember Arroyo?
Um, I just want to add that part of the reason why I wanted to support the, the small guys is because I see it as essentially a long-term investment. You know, it's just the, the nature of this pandemic and the shutdown makes it really hard for the small guy. And I think even though you have a competitive business, the shutdown could force you to close anyways. So if we can just get some of these guys just, you know, into the springtime or even summer, I think we will, you know, hold on to them for the long term. Whereas if they just are left to their own, they might go into debt and not be able to come back ever. So that's, you know, I, I'm not trying to be loose with the, the money. And in fact, you know, we could really, we could go pretty big and I'm not suggesting that, but I'm confident that, given where we are financially, that we can manage, you know, no growth for a number of years at this point. We, we've really cut back a lot for the twenty twenty-one budget. And we, I don't, I mean, City Manager Slattery can cut in, but I don't anticipate us just getting back at where we were at the beginning of nineteen twenty. I think we really got to the new normal. So, yeah, we, we're doing pretty well financially, especially with measure H, but we do not want to get into the spot where we're spending more than what we will get in the future, so.
Councilmember Molton?
I just wanted to reaffirm that the small business support does include nonprofits.
That'll be something that we can bring back, yes, and that'll be for council's consideration.
Councilmember Arroyo?
Thank you, Director Millar, for adding that and I, I like that way, that thinking. Like appreciating what you just said about sort of helping people get through and wondering, since our staff have done so much outreach to businesses, I wonder if a component of what we look at in the future is asking people, if, especially if they've developed those relationships with our staff, if they feel comfortable, like self-identifying, if they're sort of on the brink. And I don't know how to phrase that exactly or what the criteria would be for that. But if we could look at providing additional supports to get folks through who are sort of, who feel like they're on the cusp of not making it with the winter kind of, you know, post-holiday and seasonal downturn that we often see around here, I'd be, I'd be interested to know that since staff have sort of built that trust with folks. And I, that was my comment. And then I had a question just to clarify for myself and, and perhaps it will be helpful for our new council, council members, will you remind me about the process when it comes to a report versus other items? Because I thought we could do comments from the get-go on a report.
You mean, give comments on a report from the get, as far as the order and asking questions first and then?
Yes, yes, that was my question. Is that, can, can someone clarify?
That would be, I think, you Assistant City Manager.
So on, on a presentation, we usually don't take public comment. It's, but this item was under reports. And so after, when you receive the report, you can ask questions and then we do public comment. We ask if there's anyone there and then at that point, you can comment and provide direction to staff, which I think is what they were seeking on this item.
Got it. Okay, thanks. I was misunderstanding how it was framed on our agenda, so thanks.
Sorry.
Um, I have one question that's kind of off the wall and I see you too, Councilmember Castellano. One of the things that's come from businesses is that a lot of folks who were thinking they might retire in five years were thinking that they might retire now. So it's just sort of speeding up transitions, but when transitions are difficult, they just close the business altogether. I'm wondering in the thinking if there is some way to assist in business transitions to make it easier for businesses to sell or, I don't know how that goes, maybe some kind of rebate for selling the business? I don't know what that looks like. I just know that that is one of the things that comes up a lot is that some of the businesses that are closing, it's not just that they're going under, but that just that they're tired and they're like, I don't want to deal with this, this hard climb out. And, and those transitions are difficult, so it's been a long-term conversation and it's been hastened in the, in this pandemic. I'm not asking you to come up with anything right now. I'm just asking you to stick it in your head and let it bounce around for a little bit. Councilmember Castellano?
Let's see, I'm curious, you know, we had a business support program in place. I was curious if there, if that has been tapped out or is there still money left in that program?
From what I know and maybe City Manager Slattery knows more than I do, but we're nearing the end or it's going to get tapped out. But what that grant program did was really support the business to kind of change their operations. And given this time of year, if you're a restaurant, sitting outside doesn't, you know, not many people are going to take you up on that, so I, I do believe we will exhaust all of those funds. So this new program would likely do other things like support the business, paying rent or utilities. But yes, I would say that the, the CARES Act funding that we receive from the state is, we are likely to use every dollar.
Great. City Manager Slattery?
But yeah, Director Millar is correct. I believe all of the money has been spoken for. There's a couple of businesses that had put in applications that we're following up with that haven't followed through with those applications yet, so that would be the only way money would still be there.
And I'd like to add that, you know, CDBG, we had the first round of funding, it was called One or something like that. They still have not awarded us the monies. And that's what is going to support the Utility Assistance Program. And then they're going to come out with another round of funding, that's likely to be more. So the first round was roughly a hundred and fifty-six thousand to the city. So I'm expecting a roughly two hundred thousand on the next round. So that's another resource we could use in the future, but unfortunately, CDBG takes a long time to fund. And, you know, that delay is not helping anyone right now.
Would it be possible to, to get kind of a more fleshed-out report about this business, you know, support fund sometime in the, in the, in January or?
Yes, Councilmember Castellano, that was the intent to put something together with our economic development team and bring it back to council. Hopefully the first meeting in January, if not the second meeting in January. Obviously, we want to get this out sooner than later.
Councilmember Bauer?
Yeah, thank you. I was just going to say, I think we need to, you know, act expeditiously. It feels like things are going to be rough for a while still after the holidays and I support us trying to, you know, expedite something for, for our small businesses so that they can, what do we got? You know, three more months, four more months before, you know, we're, we're vaccinated and so I look forward to seeing this come back and taking some action on it. Thanks.
Finally, Director Millar, have you been in communication with CDBG to find out kind of where it is in the process?
Yeah, we contact them once a week, so.
Because I think Arcata's money is also CDBG funds, so I don't know if it's already come in. It seems like it has. So, curious. Maybe it'll be soon.
Hopefully.
Those guys are the best. Any other comments? Councilmember Bragel?
I just wanted to say thank you for the report. It's, it's good to see that we're not going to be completely underwater. And I really want to appreciate the fact that you are looking at our local businesses and supporting them. I talk to a lot of people that are struggling right now and, you know, after the Christmas season, you know, things really do slow down and so I'm hopeful that we can get people supported sooner than later. And I also appreciated the point that somebody brought up about retirement, because that's something I'm hearing too, is that there's a lot of information sometimes that gets misconstrued, if you will, and I know several businesses, at least three, that did close because they'd been in business for eighty years and they were just done. You know, they were just older businesses. And, and I've heard that that's because, you know, different things happening in the city and I just want to be clear that that's not always the case and sometimes it's good to ask a better question. Thank you.
Councilmember Castellano?
Just, just one more thing. I appreciate that Councilmember Molton brought up nonprofit. And I was also thinking about like micro businesses, maker-based businesses. And I'm wondering if it would make sense to work with some of the organizations that support local makers to develop, you know, a program that's specific. It, you know, just to make sure we kind of capture the, the full range of small businesses from those, like that are kind of more like household-based to, to actual shop owners.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I think that we'll come back with something for consideration, but the way that preliminarily, I believe, staff is looking at it is, you know, people within city limits that have a business license or nonprofit status and coming up with a mechanism to determine what qualifies them. I think that's the biggest thing because we don't want somebody who's doing well taking advantage of this and, and getting, you know, more money. We want to make sure that there's parameters in place to demonstrate that they are in need of money. And, you know, we'll bring something back for council to consider.
Councilmember Arroyo?
Sorry, I keep thinking I'm done with this topic and then the conversation brings up new stuff. By that same token, who, I'm trying to think of the best way to say this. There could be merit to, unless a business is brand-new, to showing some kind of COVID-related impact, which I'm sure every business could show, but I, I guess what I'm thinking is that we still do live in like a market-driven capitalist economy where if your business isn't catered to the local clientele and it's struggling, it was struggling before COVID, doubtless it's struggling just as much now. I, I just don't know. I don't want to say there's no value at all to, to throwing a lifeline to businesses that were already struggling, but I, I don't know if there's a way to, do you get what I'm saying? It sounds terrible to say, like, businesses that aren't successful. But there's, there's something that I think we need to do regarding, like, supporting businesses that have the elements they need to, to sustain. And, and I don't know what that looks like, so perhaps there are programs that we can just emulate that, that.
A lot of the programs that have happened from COVID to now have actually had to have COVID metrics. You had to show last year's sales and this year's sales. And it's really common and I think you can find that from many places. Go ahead, City Manager Slattery.
And one mechanism for that is what Mayor Seaman was speaking about is the, the job retention and the ability to retain those jobs over a certain period of time, need to demonstrate after COVID that they can maintain their business, but we can come back with different options. But Mayor Seaman has once again corrected, you know, we do look at it based on, you know, they were able to pay their rent, you know, all the way up until March, they've been struggling, they're, they're in arrears and rent. I mean, that's what we did for the residential part of it. We could do something similar for the commercial, for the REIT businesses, excuse me.
Definitely. It's not a difficult, it's not a question that is in the business world, an unreasonable question.
And I, I wanted to back also the comment that Councilmember Castellano made about the, some kind of like maintenance and monitoring support for old-town businesses in particular. I've recently had more requests of that nature.
Director Millar, did you have something you wanted to say and then I'll get Councilmember Bragel?
Oh, a response to Councilmember Arroyo's concern. If the business still holds a lot of tangible goods, then I can tell by sales tax numbers how well they've done in the past. But we can also require income tax information if, you know, they provide a service that is relatively easy to collect, so we can look at long-term trends and whether or not they were affected by COVID.
Councilmember Bragel?
Well, I just wanted to bring up, since we're on this topic and for anybody that's watching, Shop Local this year, Shop Local all the time, that we have so many fabulous businesses. It's been brought up tonight about different makers and just so many wonderful things that are unique to our region. So I would just encourage you, if you're watching tonight, to go spend some money in our city with local businesses.
There you go.
There you go.
It's a nice comment to end on. Does anybody else have anything else or? Right on. That's a perfect way to end this discussion. And we will move on then to item D two, which is the mayor and council memberships on boards, commissions, committees, subcommittees, and ad hoc committees. So I'm just going to go through the list and make sure that all of our committees have names on them. Humboldt Bay Fire Authority currently has two, it has an appointment and it has an alternate. Councilmember Bragel, are you continuing on that role?
I am. Thanks for asking.
Alrighty. There has been an opening for an alternate on the Humboldt Bay Fire, Humboldt Bay Fire Authority. Is there anybody interested in that alternate position?
I am.
All right.
I just have a clarification about that. I just have a clarification. It seems like last. Same like last, last time we voted about this particular issue, we had two board members and an alternate. So I'm not seeing the other board member. Am I, am I correct?
Uh, yes, so what it, I just took, I think Austin Allison's name was in the box right at, um, above yours. So we would need, um, we have two members and then one alternate, so. Councilmember Bauer wishing to be the other, uh, regular, um, appointee on that. Okay.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't, uh, I assumed that the box would be below.
Sorry.
That's okay. And we need an alternate for that. Is there anybody interested in being the alternate? If not, I will be happy to do that. Oh, Council, Councilmember Castellano?
You, you could go for it too, Mary.
I will go ahead and be the alternate on that. So.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but.
No, please do.
JPA, um, the agreement calls for two council members.
Okay.
Because of their voting status, so.
Oh, that's true. I'm so worthless in that, that respect. So, uh, Councilmember Castellano, do you want to be the alternate?
Sure.
Woe is me. Um, the Eureka Fire Department Regional Hazardous Material Response Team, they don't meet very often. Councilmember, oh, me, I'm the person that's on it, so we're good. I will stay on there. Uh, Natalie, you are the alternate?
Yeah, and I, I do have a question about that, um, just because of its, its history, uh, the, the language of this may be like the, the names don't meet up, uh, the, the previous page has the Humboldt Del Mar Hazardous Materials Response Authority. And then this says Eureka Fire Department, yada, yada. Is there, um, is there a name update here that's, that's needed?
That would be, um, perhaps Chief Robertson may be able to, I to provide on that. I believe it's the cities that are actually a member of the hazardous response team, but I'll let, um, Chief Robertson respond.
You're correct, uh, it's, uh, the Humboldt Del Norte Regional Hazmet Response Team, not the City of Eureka. The City of Eureka is a partner in the Joint Powers Authority.
That's just kind of strange wording in that first line. I see that, what you're talking about, Natalie.
I've been the alternate for a while and I can honestly say, um, I have yet to go to one of the meetings, so, um, I, I just wanted to make sure I was clear, but is there any, because it seems like there may have historically been a Eureka Fire Department link, is there any reason why it should be? Is there a reason why it should be someone from the Humboldt Bay Fire Board? Or can it be any of us?
If you're asking me, it can be any member. It's, uh, not really regarding the, the Fire Department or the Fire Joint Powers Authority. It's more the city as an entity is part of the Joint Powers Authority, like other cities in it.
Roger. Alright, thank you.
Alrighty, so that is all. Well, uh, Humboldt Transit Authority, Natalie, I have not heard that you want to get off of that, so would you like to remain on?
I would love to stay. I love being on that board.
And then, uh, Leslie, we still have, I mean, Councilmember Castellano, we still have you as an alternate? Alright. Humboldt Waste Management Authority, Councilmember Castellano, you are, um, are representative on that? Continue with that?
I would, I'm, I'm pretty happy on that.
Okay, we need an alternate for.
Uh, someone's just.
Diane. Uh, do we have anybody who would like to be an alternate on that board? Or who wants to, you know, battle Councilmember Castellano? Okay, Council, Molton?
I'll take the alternate instead of the battle.
Okay. We have put you down. Um, the next item is the, um, Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District. And I do not I don't see anybody's name on here. Um, so is there anybody who would like to?
I don't see that at all, Mayor. I.
I don't either.
Are we all looking at some, something different?
I have Burnell, Fortuna, Rio Del and Humboldt Bay, oh wait, maybe that's not the title? Oh, it's, oh, yeah. The Redwood Energy Authority, that's who we need to fill. And is that you Scott saying you want to do it, Councilmember Bauer?
Yeah, I, I would like to do that.
I was hoping you would. I was gonna try to stung arm you into it, but you didn't volunteer, so thank you very much. Um,
A pleasure.
We need an alternate for that. Does anybody want to be alternate? Councilmember Castellano. And Re Deck, we have Councilmember Castellano and Natalie and Councilmember Arroyo, are we good with that remaining?
I'm fine with remaining the alternate.
And we're moving on to the Personnel Board, um, for the City of Eureka. I am currently the alternate. Is there anybody else who's interested in this? I can move up to the main, main player if somebody wants to be my alternate.
I'll be the alternate.
Thanks, Scott.
I actually think it makes sense for the mayor to be this person because it's advising the council of rationale behind any personnel decisions. So I think it makes a lot of sense for it to be someone who's not if it's an advisory capacity, someone that's not a voting member at the council.
I am, I am the main person. Uh, Councilmember Messner has spelled it the last several years, but I'm happy to, to sit on it. And Sequoia Park Zoo Foundation. Councilmember Bragel is on it. We need an alternate for the zoo. Councilmember Molton. Excellent. And the Eureka Main Street Board currently has Councilmember Castellano and Councilmember Bragel as the alternate. Are we both, are we all good with that? Anybody want to fight him for it? Alright. Those positions are full and here's the Humboldt. Wait, did somebody want to fight him?
No, I don't want to fight, but there is an opening.
On which one then, board?
Oh, no, sorry, I'm a page ahead, nevermind.
Okay. Um, the Water District Task Force, that's the one I was getting confused with when I read the Water District. Uh, Councilmember Castellano, I heard it's a very, uh, a board that works you to death.
But I, I, I wrote Director Gerving and City Manager Slattery earlier saying, I'm, I'm happy to keep serving, um, we haven't met very, I don't think we've met since I've been on council, but should the need arise.
And Mayor Seaman, I believe there was a request to have an alternate, just in case, sometimes they have a short, um, noticing period on these meetings, so if we could have an alternate, that would be helpful.
Anybody want to be the Water Services District alternate?
I'll, I'll do it if nobody else, oh, go ahead.
Oh.
Ask what time is the meeting?
It doesn't say here. Do you know, uh, city clerk or assistant city manager pal? One o'clock.
One o'clock? So all yours, Councilmember Arroyo.
It's a ten, ten o'clock, presumably a standardized day. Oh, this is like their, their all-day board meetings that you go to? No, it looks like Director Gerving.
Same thing, go ahead.
If I may, Madam, yeah, the, the Water Task Force, I think if they have met in the time that I've been Director of Public Works, which is, uh, going on six years, uh, it was only once. So it's very infrequent and, uh, they're typically arranged like City Clerk Powell said, on short notice and, um, I don't think there's any set time. It's basically, uh, as needed and as available for the member schedules, but we, we do need an alternate for that reason, because they're short notice.
I'll do it.
You are, okay, thank you. Um, then we are going to move on to the Humboldt County and City of Eureka Working Group. That was uh, Councilmember Bragel and we have one opening on that. And so that is the city and county getting together with, uh, to talk about um, whatever items we are talking about at the time. A lot of times it has to do with homelessness or.
We haven't met in a long time either.
I was just gonna say, I don't know if we're gonna meet.
Go ahead.
I, I don't know if it, it morphed at some point. I think when City Manager Sparks was here, it somewhat morphed. Um, there was, uh, the, the homeless leadership group that kind of went, went into for a while. And that still meets and I believe Councilmember Castellano attends a lot of those meetings. Um, we do have kind of a the, the, what City Manager Sparks set up was a kind of a two by two, um, with, um, Supervisor Bass and Supervisor Bone, um, with their CAO. We could maybe use that as this.
Do, um, would it make any sense to just not have this anymore and then just reestablish it when there's an item to come up? Or Councilmember Bragel?
So just to clarify, the meetings that I was attending and I think Councilmember Arroyo was with me as well, were, uh, Billy Hansel, Amy, um, what's that? The Eureka School Board, uh, who else was there? It was, it was a, it was a group. It wasn't just a two by two. There was, it was a a substantial group of people and it just kind of had, hasn't really been moving forward. I can't even remember the last meeting we went to. Do you, Councilmember Arroyo? It's been a while.
It was huge and really dominated by staff, which like felt like an important productive conversation for staff to be having, but I remember, um, feeling like it would be a very different conversation if it were truly two, two supervisors, two council members and the respective, um, administrators for those jurisdictions. So if it were to go back to that, I'd be super interested. Otherwise, it felt sort of not as, um, useful to me.
So, so I can, I can get with CAO Nielsen at the county and have these discussions and then we can bring something back to council.
Do you want to do that? Do we want to then, um, appoint people at that time? Or do you want to just fill it up now?
I'm happy to stay on. Um, I enjoyed going to the meetings. I thought they were interesting. I did feel like uh, Councilmember Arroyo said that they were very lopsided and that we weren't really heard. Um, so it would be nice to have uh, something smaller, but I'm certainly interested in still being on that committee.
And Councilmember Arroyo, you were the alternate. Do you want it?
It, it looked like someone else might be interested. Uh, Councilmember Bauer, were you raising your hand for that one?
No, I was just, I, I'm just interested in the fact that, you know, we have a working group that seems like it should meet pretty regularly. I mean, we have interlocking issues, you know, and it's like, what? Why aren't, why isn't the county meeting with the city? You know, why aren't we talking about our shared, our shared issues? That's all. You know, I'm really interested in seeing this committee meet myself.
Councilmember Bragel.
So part of that was that, um, Supervisor Bass, her availability was pretty limited. She's on a lot of different committees outside the area, or she was at that time. And so it was challenging to get her in the same room with us. It should be a priority though, I agree.
City Manager Slattery?
Hey, I just want to clarify that we, uh, Councilmember Bauer, we definitely meet often with many different departments and the CAO and DHHS very often. Um, there hasn't been, um, kind of a council board meetings that have been regularly scheduled.
Thanks.
And I would agree that, that, that the staff to staff conversation seems to happen a lot and I have, um, in lieu of having this, I have regular, um, chats, coffee talks, walks around town with Supervisor Bass that I set up, um, to confer about issues, but I would really like it to be more formalized and this two by two structure to be reinstated. So I'm willing to commit the time and, um, I'm excited for it to kind of kick off again if, if Supervisors Bass and Bone are willing to, um, prioritize doing it, you know, maybe even every other month as a standing meeting or something like that.
Alright, so we have two, we need an alternate. And, and I'm happy to be the alternate on that. Okay. So then we have the Eureka City Schools, um, City of Eureka Working Group and I hear that Councilmember Molton is interested in that.
I would love to be on that working group.
Alright, and then Councilmember Castellano, would you be the alternate?
Sounds good.
Councilmember Castellano has served on that for the past several years, so. Um, several too. It's been a very long one year, so feels like several. Um, League of Cities, Redwood, Empire Division Legislative Committee, I hear, uh, that Councilmember Bauer wanted that position, so.
Yes, thank you.
Um, and then Ca- League of Cities Coastal Cities Commission, I heard Castellano is interested in that position?
Do you want an, uh, there, it looks like there's an alternate place for the legislative.
Legislative?
Coastal.
Do you want that one, uh, Councilmember Castellano?
Sure.
Or does somebody else want it?
Yeah, I mean, if, if someone else wants it, they could have it, but I'm interested. Trying not to be overly eager.
Um, and then we have the League of Cities Business Delegate.
So Mayor, the Legislative and the Business, uh, meet the same day usually quarterly. So if the same person and alternate want to serve, that works.
Oh, great.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that.
Does someone, the Coastal Cities alternate?
Uh, they've never asked for one before. We've never, um, provided one for Councilmember Messner when she served on it. Uh, but we certainly could add someone to that.
How about if, uh, anybody interested in that?
I'll do it if we want to have an alternate.
Okay.
Sure. I've served on other league committees, but it's been a little while.
Um, Eureka Chamber of Commerce Ad hoc Liaisons, Councilmember Bragel is on that, um, and we have room for another person. Is there anybody else who is interested in that? If not, I could do it.
That's another one where we just really don't meet too often.
Yeah. Um, and then the Humboldt District City of Eureka Working Group, Humboldt Harbor District. There's some exciting stuff going on with the Harbor District, but I don't know how often this working group meets, the two by two. Councilmember Arroyo, you are on that?
I really like being on that and I would like to stay.
Is there anybody else who is dying to be on that? Councilmember Bragel. I remember this one was hot last time too. Is there anybody who's interested in being an alternate? I will do that one then. Um, there's a lot of fun stuff happening in the Harbor District, so. We're done. Thank you, guys. You made that really painless. We filled up all the positions, so I appreciate it. Um, I am sure Assistant City Manager Powell caught all that, but if not, I wrote everybody's name down. Okay. And then we are going to move on then. To the next item on the agenda, which is I have messed up my agenda. Oh, here it is. Um, Mayor Pro Tim. So for the past two years, uh, Councilmember Bragel has been Mayor Pro Tim. Um, she has shown up every time I have ever asked her to fill in for my duties. Um, so that is my information I'm giving to you, but do I have a nomination for a Mayor Pro Tim or is there anybody else who might be interested in that position? It's up to you guys to pick this one, so.
We, I was gonna suggest, um, if, if, um, Councilmember Bragel, if you were wanting a break, I was gonna say that I think Councilmember Castellano would be a great choice as well, um, or either of our new council members, so really. So really, I was gonna say anybody but me, just because there's a lot of a lot of events that with my current work schedule, I'm not able to attend. But yeah, I I think it's really amazing that you that both of you and the time you've been on council, councilmembers Bregel and Castellano, go to so many community events and represent the city. So thank you for doing that.
So I would say that I love being Mayor Pro Tim, but I also embrace and support term limits and new energy. So though it would be very, very sad for me because I do run a really tight meeting, I would be willing to I would be willing to share the responsibility. Sadly, but certainly I will. I might even cry.
To clarify, nobody else told me they wanted it. I was just saying.
So here is the thing. So I am looking for a nomination. If there's anybody who would like to make a nomination, they can nominate themselves as well. Councilmember Bauer?
I nominate Kim Bregel for Mayor Pro Tim. Term limits doesn't apply.
All right, I have a I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing, can we take a vote now?
Councilmember Castellano?
Oh, she froze.
She's frozen.
She's super frozen. Maybe she.
The happy frozen.
I know. So maybe we'll ask the other. Oh, there she is. So Councilmember Castellano, we're taking a vote now. Did you hear the motion?
Sorry, yeah, my internet. But I.
Councilmember Moulton?
I.
Councilmember Arroyo?
I.
Councilmember Bauer?
I.
Councilmember Bregel?
Oh, you but muted yourself to say I.
Yes, with gratitude.
All right.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. So the next item is about traffic safety and this is my item. So I suppose I will be doing the report on this.
Mayor, could I could I ask for a short, a very short break?
Oh, yes, you can.
Would that be okay? I'm excited for this item, though.
Okay, this is perfect. We usually do it at eight, but then we'll just we'll come back at eight o'clock. How's that? Okay.
Councilmember Castellano, how's it going with your holiday decorations for the contest?
Well, I did not. I did not make the deadline for for entering into the contest. I know. But we have been able to get lights around the perimeter of the roof of the the building, which is kind of, it feels momentous because we've been working on it for so long, so.
Very tall, too. So of course, that doesn't bother you. Like, most people are afraid of heights, but you're like, whatever.
I I am pretty used to heights. I did not lights up, though.
That's right.
Sadly, I did not do it.
All right. Wait for City Manager Slattery and Assistant City Manager Powell to get back and then we can begin. All right. I have a very snorty dog. And my husband went to bed. And then now he's just walking around going. I used to actually have a pig.
It sounds like a pig.
Huh?
It sounds like a pig.
Yeah, he acts like a pig. So sometimes he'll just fall asleep and snore and then it's not my husband, it's the dog, just so you know. All right, so we're all back and ready to go.
Including Mayor Seaman's dog.
Including Mayor Seaman's dog. So I thank you for putting this item on the agenda tonight. I guess I I put it on the agenda. But I want to start my report today by telling a story. A few years ago, I was looking out the front window to my house and I saw a little preschool kid playing on a scooter across the street near a driveway, which gave me some pause. And then I looked at the street to see a young driver, maybe in his twenties, in a big truck, like heading right, you know, towards the house, which you would do. And the kid picked up his legs and the scooter just rolled right into the street. And the guy in the truck just stopped. He didn't swerve. He didn't have any hard braking. He was totally aware of his surroundings. And he was able to act appropriately when that happened. And I was so grateful and so impressed. Somebody pulled the kid back into the yard and the truck simply went on. And that could have so easily been a tragedy. And it would not have been the driver's fault, but it would have been life changing for him. So I mentioned this story because I want to start this discussion about traffic safety with an example of what is possible when defensive driving becomes a habit. Unfortunately, we hear far too many examples of stories where drivers, pedestrians and cyclists are not so lucky. When I ran for office two years ago, traffic safety and especially speed was one of the biggest concerns I heard. I continue to receive feedback from residents throughout the city on large thoroughfares and small cul-de-sacs. Eureka ranks as a city that has the most accidents that result in injury fatalities when compared to other communities our size, according to the Office of Transportation Safety's most recent figures, which are 2017. This year, we've had five fatalities in Eureka, not counting the tragedy where the woman died before the accident. Tonight, I'm asking City Council to join me in declaring a traffic safety crisis. So what does that even mean? It signals that currently a significant number of traffic incidents are creating a health and safety issue that affects the quality of life in our community. Declaration is meant to bring attention to the matter, not just to City Hall, but community wide. And it gives us an opportunity as a council to talk about traffic safety as an overarching issue and not just as pertains to a certain project. Eureka has a population of about 26,000 people, but we see three times that on our roads on any given day. There are three basic approaches to traffic safety enforcement, engineering and education. That third section, education, provides the key where we can begin to make a difference today. And that is just good defensive driving habits. It's not expensive and we can start right away. It also empowers every one of us to make a difference in the effort. It asks us all in the whole community to make traffic safety one of our community values. So at this time, I'd like to propose a short term, six month task force to determine what we can do immediately to address some of those education issues. Because it's not just a Eureka issue, since so many people from the county come to Eureka on a regular basis. Key will be to break down silos between different agencies and get a unified group to work towards a single campaign. I would envision I would envision including representatives from the following groups. Eureka Police Department, the City's Engineering Department, somebody from the Eureka Transportation Safety Commission. Community leaders from City Council and Board of Supervisors and Supervisor Bass has already expressed interest. A representative from Caltrans, from the Humboldt County Association of Governments, or HCOG. C H P Sheriff's Office, Department of Public Health, Eureka City Schools, Coalition for Responsible Transportation. R C A A, as well as representatives from the F Street and Sixth and Seventh Street Neighborhood Groups About Safety. Together, I would like to see them work to create a campaign and action plan that could be presented to the City's Transportation and Safety Commission and then City Council within three to six months. It's a lot of people and a really quick turnaround, I know. Given the short time period, clear direction towards an education campaign rather than a broader safety traffic safety directive will keep things on pace. I'm hopeful that the task force will spark opportunities to work together on future projects in all areas of traffic safety if everybody is at the table now. So just having that task force can help create relationships. That said, I'm not the first person to bring transportation safety people together. Several of these groups are part of the Technical Advisory Group from HCOG and the city obviously has worked in partnership with other organizations on many projects. So I don't think I am the first person to do this, but I do think this task force can allow for different kinds of conversations than they have in those more technical meetings. As part of this process, we would need to allocate some funding minimal for an experienced facilitator as well as some marketing funds to help push the campaign forward. We can seek additional sponsors for marketing part of the campaign as it becomes more fully formed. But I would think an allocation of about $6,000 could allow us to confirm a facilitator so we can start putting together the task force. And that is really the gist of what I have right now. I'm open for questions. And I do believe Director Gerbing, Chief Watson and of course, City Manager Slattery are also here for any more information about the topic. And with that, I will go ahead and open the floor to questions. Does anybody have questions? Councilmember Arroyo?
Could you repeat or clarify the the intent of the the funding would be to?
To hire a facilitator?
A non-city staff person to do facilitation of this. Okay, and then to also do some public messaging potentially?
So the public messaging would probably come out of the group. And so I think the marketing would be a separate part of it and we could either engage Eddie Alexander. Unless we have a really talented task force group that wants to take on some marketing stuff. But this is just for the facilitation, mostly to get messaging, to figure out how to create a culture of how to create a culture where traffic safety becomes a city value.
Would you envision the the group also making any specific recommendations around other areas of focus or is it primarily changing the culture that's at the heart of it?
Well, I imagine that. Well, I imagine that in the messaging, there will be very specific actions. I mean, there are so many different campaigns for traffic safety. It could be, you know, there was a heads-up campaign that we did, which is, you know, great going with pedestrians. There's DUI campaigns, there, there's a million different traffic safety things. I think this would be finding kind of a more holistic messaging. But I, I recognize that there is an issue, and I recognize that there is value to bringing people together. I think that what we need is, we need a change in how we think about traffic safety from one that is always about whose fault is it, and more about what can we, what can we do to be safer? But I don't think I'm the smartest person in the room, so I don't want to say what they would come up with when they came together, and what that ultimate message would be.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Councilmember Bauer?
Yeah, Mayor Seaman, I, I totally agree with you. You know, I don't know if it's just a, it is a cultural issue. I, I, just yesterday, I saw a woman in a crosswalk, she hit the flashing, the things flashing, and I think ten cars just, just kept on going. You know, just nobody could stop, right in front of Ramones, actually. And I actually yelled at the last car because she was starting into the crosswalk, and she blew right by her. I yelled at him, you know, but, you know, we, we got to figure something out. People blow through my stop sign right in front of my house, like it's not even there. You know, it's getting, it's old, but it'd be great to see some, something happen. I mean, for us, we need to start here, because it's epidemic, really. Wherever we go, people drive like idiots, so.
I heard, I heard a PSA on the way home today, I think it's on KZZP or whatever the Access Humboldt radio station is. And it was somebody who'd moved here recently, and they said, I'm, I can't remember who, what his name was, and I just moved here from Idaho, and I'd just like to say, we have some atrocious drivers here, and we need to stop at stop signs, and we need to not speed. And, and I thought how appropriate was that tonight we were going to be talking about this, that that was the impression that somebody got moving into the area. Councilmember Bergel?
Well, I'm just curious if you've brought this forward at all to the Transportation Safety Commission? Pardon to bring in this forward, and I'll tell you, the reason I'm asking that is that when we did our, I was on the commission when we did our heads-up campaign, and it was facilitated by Sheila Parrott, who has been Director of Engineering. And the commission, we did PSAs, we did a whole educational program with banners and all sorts of things for a really minimal amount of money. And in the current climate with the Transportation Safety Commission, I've gotten complaints from them for not having things to do. And so, it feels like this, that would be a great opportunity to start with them and see what they came up with.
So, the thing about, because they would be, they would be getting the first, kind of the first responses from the task force. But the task force is really countywide, that has representation from all of those different agencies, that would then make up a campaign and take it to the, to transportation safety, and we would have somebody from transportation safety on that task force. But it's a much broader, much broader picture than just the city. It's really looking at this as a larger countywide issue.
Well, and I can say that when we did the heads-up campaign, that that was, I mean, there certainly, people came at public comment, people came and spoke about their concerns, and we, you know, kind of added those into the process. So, I guess I'm just curious, you know, why we wouldn't start with the commission that we have that doesn't really have a lot going on right now, and then build from there? I, I, I'm just, just a question.
We could, I think, I think that it's a much... I think, I don't know, if council wants to start, I mean, I think that we should absolutely positively incorporate the Transportation Safety Commission. I think that having the task force be made up of professionals who work in the industry and community leaders is, brings a different level of commitment by the city. It shows a different level of commitment by the city to the general public than, than using the existing commission. I think we should absolutely use the existing commission as, as part of a resource for this. But if the council wants to use the commission, that's fine, too. Councilmember Arroyo?
To follow on to my previous question about things that aren't related to the, to a, a safety campaign, would you envision that items that come out of it that are not necessarily related to that campaign per se, but are related to transportation safety could then go to the Transportation Safety Commission as items to look at, you know, moving forward? Or, because I imagine there will be a lot that comes out of it that's not related to a campaign.
I think that that is true, that in the short period of time, it will be mostly that campaign, but within that group of people, that different and different issues would definitely come out that could then come in through staff through different methods, and then would go through the transportation safety.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I will ask if we have public comment on this? Oh, wait, oh, okay.
Yes, Mayor, we do. Our first person who requested is Kate Saka?
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for allowing me to comment. My name is Katie Sharp, and I'm one of the founding members of the Slow F Street Group that formed in June of this year. You can find out more about us at slowfstreet.com or through our Facebook group with the same name. Our neighborhood includes the Rosewood area and the Henderson Center, as F Street has become a de facto bypass for Broadway's traffic issues. Even GPS reroutes traffic through our little neighborhood street, so much so that there's overspill onto the nearby neighborhood streets of D, E, F, and H. Speeds and traffic flow have been steadily increasing, and we've got big rigs going through the neighborhood. Rosewood has languished for decades now with the last official county effort put into traffic calming measures coming from the Redwood Community Action Agency's Walkability Study of 2011, where none of the recommendations were fully implemented, and Grant Elementary children still struggle with safe routes to school. A street safety light was recommended at that time, well before several cut-in traffic calming measures took place, and without having to meet the same Department of Transportation criteria. So, with individual neighbors receiving inconsistent information and action, we finally united to bring our concerns forward. What we have learned is F Street super corridor runs the length from Henderson to Herrick. We've had deaths of pedestrians and drivers from rememberable history of 1999 with Mary Baseball Betty Lacefield and Bill Sarge Bayish being killed in the crosswalk at Henderson and F to 2020 with the golf course accident that just happened. Those of us who live in crash zones such as the school crossing at Oak are traumatized by the crunching of metal and cries of victims, property damage, and being startled awake, not knowing if we're going to be harmed or die. Absent partnerships to resolve this crisis, we've written three grants, and we've asked RCAA to conduct a more inclusive, wider study of the area so that we can receive an evidence-based third-party report that the city and county might fund. We have held several pop-up events trying to educate passing-by vehicles. We started a newsletter, and we hold monthly Zoom meetings. We've met with Natalie Arroyo and Eureka Police, which resulted in increased enforcement and a reduction of speeds for a little bit. And there are rumors that the county has put the Oak Street Safety Light recommendation from 2011 into Measure Z consideration without a modern-day feasibility study. But with the significant changes in the last decade, neighbors are concerned that this will only shift accidents to another section or jurisdiction.
Thank you, Kate. I'm sorry, there's a time.
Sure.
Thank you very much, though.
Yeah.
And we'll have time to talk outside of here as well, I'm sure.
Okay.
Our next public speaker is Colin Fisk.
Thank you very much.
Colin Fisk, I'm the Executive Director of the Coalition for Responsible Transportation Priorities. I first wanted to thank you, Mayor Seaman, for bringing this forward and, you know, recognizing the seriousness and urgency of the safety situation in the city, particularly for bikes and pedestrians, but really for everybody. I, I think, you know, an official declaration of, of a public health or public safety crisis in this regard would be appropriate and would help us shine a light on the issue and, and help us prioritize it as a community. Regarding the task force, CRTP would be pleased to, to serve on that. I would respectfully request that the charge of the task force be broadened to include both education and engineering approaches, because I think that, you know, I think that the research indicates that engineering approaches are a critical, a critical aspect of, of any effective approach to, to safety improvement. I think education is, is important, and we should follow, you know, the evidence-based approaches to, to education and, and cultural change, and there, I have some ideas on that already. But I'd also like to be able to talk about engineering approaches on the task force. Thank you again, and I hope that this moves forward.
Thank you. That's all.
Mayor, we have one more. Kelly Wehousen.
Thank you very much, Kelly.
Hello. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak. I've been a Humboldt County resident for over 30 years now, and then I also have the privilege of serving the community as a pharmacist for the last seven years. And traffic safety wasn't really an issue I would have chosen to become passionate about until my life really changed a year ago, when I was a pedestrian in the crosswalk with the legal right-of-way, and I was hit by a car. And my whole life changed at that point. I was just one block from my house here on F Street. And then, working in healthcare, I've noticed that there's this really an abundance of pedestrians in our area that got hit by cars in Eureka, and the situation doesn't really seem to be getting any better and only worse, in fact. And what really compounds a lot of these issues is that these accidents tend to be hit-and-run, and we don't have police force to have just a police enforcement officer. And then, when we do a lot of reporting in the news on these accidents, a lot of the blame gets placed on pedestrians rather than any issues with the driver or city conditions. So, I'm really glad that the city is taking steps to, to try to make real changes, because people are dying now from these accidents. We all know that Broadway is one of the hotspots that pedestrians get hit, that that's being looked at by Caltrans in the city. But another hotspot that really needs attention is F Street. F Street is really unique, and that it's the only street that connects the waterfront on both ends via Herrick Avenue. And the recent changes to Broadway have increased the traffic onto F Street, and it's become a bypass for Broadway. So, the speeds on F Street have become unsafe, and just since November of 2019, where I live in F Street in a one-block radius, my neighbor had their house crashed into by a truck. I was hit in the crosswalk. My neighbor was hit in the same crosswalk and ended up passing away from injuries. And just less than two weeks ago, a car ran into the cornerstone area. These are all accidents that I personally witnessed and have affected me. And I know that there's been a lot of accidents on other areas of F Street. And so, I really think that there needs to be, help make a nice, safe entrance for Eureka, especially with the COVID vaccine being distributed. People are going to be going out more and wanting to socialize. So, I think improving the traffic safety for all modes is an important focus for Eureka. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
That is all that have, that are all this, those are all the speakers that have signed up tonight.
Thank you very much. So, I will bring it back to council for any kind of discussion and recommendations on how to move forward on this. Councilmember Bergel?
I would like some clarification maybe from Director Gerving or Director Slattery. So, one of the things that I've heard and have been put out by some people in the county is that the recent improvement on Broadway has created major problems in other areas of our city, particularly F Street. And I was curious, when was the last speed study we did on that street? And could you speak to, you know, the, the facts of it? Is that the true, you know, from our recent speed study, or is that something that has shifted over time?
Well, I do know there was a study done pre and post of the development, and I think Director Gerving can speak more specifically to the timeframes and the results.
Yep. Thank you, Councilmember Bergel. There was a speed survey and traffic count, round of traffic counts that were done earlier this year. We found that counts were down, and, and which, to a certain extent, stands to reason, given COVID. And speeds were also down compared to the previous one. I don't have either of those studies in front of me. But there was not a huge difference up or down in the average along the corridor, and certain intersections were up, certain intersections were down. Volumes on F Street haven't changed significantly for about 20 years or so. But the recent improvements on Broadway, if, if we're referencing signals at Vigo and Hawthorne, have not had an impact on traffic volumes and additional traffic shunting off the Broadway corridor.
Thank you. I know that we did speed studies, probably, now it's been probably 13 years ago, when we were working with that population on F Street to try and come up with some mitigations. And some things were done, but clearly, there's more to be done.
Okay. You're still, are you still going, Kim? You're still, you're on mute still.
I was just gonna, I was just gonna speak and ask again. You know, I think that our commissions, we have been in place for a reason. They have a lot of training, not that they're the end-all, be-all as far as experts go. And I do believe that other people can certainly have input. I know that that heads-up campaign was very successful at the time, and it was put together by, then, the former Scott Elsmar, which would have been Sheila Parrott. And then, there were TV commercials done, PSAs from different council members at the time and different board members. It was a full-on education program. And I'm just curious if we couldn't consider looking into something like that, where we're actually using our, our commissions who haven't been doing much, if anybody would be interested in that, in, in a full way, where certainly, they could get recommendations from outside groups, but that they would be with Scott Elsmar, maybe more of the lead.
Councilmember Arroyo?
I definitely want to also think about ways to empower our commissions. And I know that the Transportation Safety Commission in particular, I've also heard from folks who serve there that they would like to be focusing on, on more. So, in thinking about their products and what they have worked on, I know we have Transportation Safety Action Plan. It's not clear to me, it was, it came out in 2015, and it has a supplementary document that's about neighborhood traffic calming. But is there a, and, like, was it a five-year plan? Does staff happen to know? It doesn't say in the document itself, actually, like, it starts in 2015, but I don't know if it has, like, It doesn't say in the document itself, actually, like, is, it starts in twenty fifteen, but I don't know if it has like an end point.
I'm not familiar with that study, Director Gerving. Are you?
I don't have a good answer for you. I can tell you that a lot of safety improvements have been implemented in that timeframe and elements of safety elements have been included in H-SIP applications for the past three cycles to the tune of a million and a half awarded and six and a half, or another five million for a total of six and a half that's in the current year application. So safety projects consistent with what was in that action plan are definitely underway.
Okay. Yeah, and none of this is to take away from the, I agree that we should declare a traffic safety crisis, Mayor Seaman. I think that adds, that elevates the awareness around it and can start a really productive conversation. I just want to understand sort of where to direct people to look at our existing plans. Because I do agree with what I've seen in the current Transportation Safety Action Plan and the Neighborhood Traffic Calming piece of it. And those are great goals that I think are still relevant. And even if project work has occurred, like, they remain just as relevant. It just seems like a lot of the maps and data needs to be updated. And of course, like, they could be revisited. It just seems like even if it was published in twenty fifteen and was a five-year plan, which would be about what I would expect, like, we'd be due for a refresh anyway. So I wonder if the Transportation Safety Commission would take on an update to the Transportation Safety Action Plan as well as either, as two routes, like, either this could be a special ad hoc committee group convened by you, the mayor, to work with members of the Transportation Safety Commission, but also all those other entities that you named to address like immediate transportation safety messaging and public outreach. And a lot of the other work could be wrapped in and prioritized by the Transportation Safety Commission to bring to us. Or this could be, I'm looking at the, the like boards and commissions and their kind of the, what is this called? This is like inner city. The city ordinance that pertains to their creation and powers and duties. It does look like they can establish standing committees to expedite comprehensive review of certain matters. And so this seems to me like it could fall within that and they could ask all of those other people to be guests and participants in that committee. So that would be a way of doing it under their existing structure if that's important to, to the council. I don't know that it matters, like, I don't know if it matters to you, Madam Mayor, but it, it might matter to the Transportation Safety Commissioners.
So what I really like about what you're saying is the updated plan that we worked on before. If that went through the Transportation Safety Committee, that would be run by this, by our city staff. They oversee it to provide direction. And they can work on, and that piece. The thing I like about the task force and the reason I was really caring about the task force is that it requires buy-in and that it becomes not just a city project, but it becomes owned by everybody. So if they're a guest to the Transportation Safety Committee, they contribute to a city project but don't have the same buy-in that if it's one that they created as part of a team.
Yeah, and I, I think there's value in the task force having county participation, especially with the city counter and county interface that especially has to do with the conversations with residents of, you know, my ward in particular. But also, you know, when it comes to Caltrans and Caltrans jurisdiction running through the city and yeah, I think that has a lot of value.
Yeah, updating that other plan sounds like a great way to use the, to use the Transportation Safety Committee. I would think that even if we have the task force, the Transportation Safety Committees or Commissions workload would go way up and they would be engaged, but.
Yeah, I, I'm seeing two parallel tracks that could complement each other. And I don't see why they can't happen at the same time, that the Transportation Safety Commission can't do its work that's already established and look to updating this great plan that needs a refresh and to be updated with current data. And that can really guide more of our, like, city engineering priorities and things like that. And then also like this public messaging and community embrace of the issue that you're recommending being part of a task force.
That was, that's kind of how I imagined it.
Love it.
Anybody else? Councilmember Bragel? How does that sound to you?
I wasn't ready, but that, that does pique my interest. I would really, I just, as commission members, we, we put them in a place of, you know, to give them the leeway to do the things that are necessary with support to get things done. And I just feel like, especially with COVID, there's just been really, and even prior to COVID with the Transportation Safety Commission, frankly. I mean, I was getting complaints a year last, you know, two summers ago, that their meetings were being canceled. There was nothing going on and that type of thing. I do think that that Transportation Safety Plan, that it probably could use an update at this point and the mapping could be shifted because certainly that was a while ago. I did work on that. And there were other people that came and partnered with that as well. It wasn't just the Transportation Safety Commission and, and Scott Elsmar or Sheila. So I like that idea. I just, I think, and I hear what you're saying about having, you know, different buy-in from other people. But I, I guess my concern about that is I don't want it to get diluted. Diluted into, you know, how things can be. And you know, I personally have had conversations with Rex about the F Street quarter. I know they did put in a grant October nineteenth to try and get some money to do some things over there. So perhaps, perhaps having, you know, the supervisors involved in that would be helpful. I just, I just feel like we have commissions for a reason and we need to use them.
I totally get that. And that's why we're doing a whole visioning session to discuss how to better use commissions. And talking with city staff, and commissions are traditionally advisory capacity. So they advise on things that are, are sort of done by the staff.
Yeah. Well, we did advise on the Transportation Safety Plan and we did work with Sheila on putting together that campaign with banners and PSAs and in fact, my son was in a PSA. I think he was like five at the time or something. So he, but yeah, I'm not opposed to having other people involved. I just want to make sure that we are really embracing the, the people that we have in our commissions and supporting them into knowing that they're appreciated and that there is work to be done and that they are the people to do that.
I totally, I totally get that. I totally do. I think I see this as as something that's different and outside of it. But I, but not with a, but not without going to them for advisement and opinions and.
One thing I did like, I will say, is I did like the idea of you know, part of, like, working in tandem and having part of the task force work on the bigger, like, the engineering issues like on Broadway, those types of things. But I think, you know, in the city, it's going to be city staff that's going to really be most involved in that.
Yeah, and I think that that is a good way to handle it. Councilmember Castellano.
I'm a fan of the, the kind of parallel track concept where the City of Eureka Transportation Safety Commission is working on updating and refining the, the City of Eureka Transportation Safety Action Plan, kind of in concordance with this larger focus group. Partially because I think that some of the, I don't want to say marketing, but some, some of the, you know, kind of public announcement work really needs to happen countywide. As well as, you know, bringing in our, am I frozen? I'm not frozen.
You're good.
Sorry. As well as bringing in our, you know, other community partners, just because I, I think that yeah, this is a big issue, you know, throughout the county also. You know, in Eureka as a county, county seat, we definitely get maybe the brunt of it. But, you know, I think to be really effective, it, it will benefit from having these other partners involved in a more concerted way.
Any other comments? Councilmember Arroyo.
Do you need a motion to declare this Transportation Safety Crisis? That's the correct language, right?
Yes, it is, it is a crisis. And you know what I didn't say was upon the declaration of the crisis, we'll work on a proclamation to bring to council.
Okay. I think there's value in that and I, I I will move that we declare a Transportation Safety Crisis.
We're looking for direction. It's actually a good idea so that we can bring it back to the next scheduled meeting, if that's.
Oh, perfect. Okay.
Got it. Okay.
So then, okay. So we, how do we vote on that then? Just consensus?
City Manager Slattery, do you have a clear understanding of the direction?
Yes, I think so. So yeah, alls we need them to do is counsel to approve or by consensus to give staff direction to move forward and we'll bring something back to council at the January second meeting.
And the direction will be the two different tracks, the task force and then the Transportation Action Plan through the commission. Councilmember Bragel.
One final clarification. So similar to, say, like, the Planning Commission, would, would the recommendations from this ad hoc committee, would they then go back to the Transportation Safety Commission to be to give a recommendation to council about what they, so they will still have an opportunity to make recommendations.
They would get it before the council would, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's just really, as I've said, ad nauseam, probably that it's just really important.
No, I, I definitely, and I, I have that in my report, that it would go to them and then to us. Councilmember Arroyo.
Thank you. I also feel like I'm like saying something ad nauseam, but I, I, this is so important to me that I can't risk missing this opportunity. I really, just because we're talking about the process and the nuts and bolts and how it works and who does what when, I don't want it to not seem like this is urgent and a priority. And I think by establishing like that there is a, a crisis that we all, that we recognize and that we need a, like, short-term immediate work around, some work around, like, how people perceive others using the roadway and sharing the roadway, that that's like really, that that has a lot of value. And that by also saying, like, we really support and back the Transportation Safety Commission to look at the new data and come up with recommendations and work with our staff to bring us something that we can implement, that that sort of backs that commission in a way that, of course, we always back our commissions, but they haven't had this imperative in a while. And nor have we really had, in my mind, the flexibility with our resources. But now with the passage of Measure H, it does seem like we might have the opportunity to prioritize safety in new and different ways. So I just, I don't want people to feel like this was just a bunch of process talk without it feeling like it could become something very material. So that is all I wanted to add.
Thank you for clarifying that, because it is really hard to, to come to a matter that's so big and say, how can we do something in this very short amount of time that feels like it's, it has any value. But I do think, and I'll give you an example. Because I do think this mattered. When COVID first started and the, the CIRK Commission said, we need to create a narrative that says masks are good for business. So right away in Humboldt County, we started, we started a campaign that said, if you're pro-mask, you're pro-business. If you look at where we are in terms of our COVID rates, as opposed to being number one, we are second from the bottom. It might be third from the bottom now, but definitely the most populous community with the least amount of, of COVID. And I think that a lot of that has to do with really the culture that we created around being committed to protecting each other and protecting masks or by wearing masks and by supporting our economy, seeing how that affects the bigger community. I, I honestly believe that it made a difference. And I think that we could make that same difference if we can get people to understand that it is a community value to take care of each other on road. Councilmember Bragel.
So I just wanted to make sure that I, that I heard you correctly. So you will be engaging Jennifer, Eddie Alexander in this process for the marketing piece?
I have talked to City Manager Slattery about that, yes.
Yeah, because marketing is going to be a big piece.
Yeah. All right. I think that you have your direction, so we can move on from the, to the next item. And, and the next item is City Manager Report. How about Bay Fire into the year review, but I'll let you introduce it.
Hi, thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we have Chief Robertson here to provide his end-of-the-year report that is done annually, obviously. He was going to show up at a previous meeting, but we wanted to give him ample time to do a full report. So welcome, Chief Robertson.
Thank you, City Manager Slattery. I'm going to share my screen to begin. So, good evening, Mayor, Council, and a special welcome to our new council members. My name is Sean Robertson. I'm the fire chief from Bay Fire, which, as you may know, is a consolidation of the City of Eureka and Humboldt Number One Fire Protection District. Knowing well that I would come at the end of a meeting, that would probably be long. I'm going to present a very brief overview of our year, which has been quite unprecedented and end with some highlights that I think you'll enjoy. What I'll be talking about tonight is a brief overview of our calls for service, the effects of COVID on our calls as well as our agency. The facility upgrades we've made, which are part of our strategic plan. And then the highlights I mentioned is the video series that we created and shared on YouTube. So this is a basic overview of our incident types for the year. We've trended pretty standard, you know, even through COVID with the majority of our calls around sixty percent being medical and rescue types, which include traffic collisions. Our fires continue at a rate of about four percent, which is frankly higher than usual. And we continue to have several structural fires as well as vehicle fires and other types. And then the other types of calls, we go to service calls, which are things like lift assists and lockouts and good intent calls where we're called for something that it doesn't usually turn out to be. Those, again, continue to be at about the same rate. Just as a reminder, we use the National Fire Incident Reporting System and that's where all these codes and categories are based on. And that's just a basic breakdown of what all of those categories consist of. The good intent one is something that is often confusing. But it's sometimes where calls that don't fit any other categories are put as well. This is a very busy graph, but what it shows is how the coal volume has changed per quarter for each of the five stations that Humboldt Bay Fire has, three in the city, two in the district. You'll see that Station One is our busiest station, that's one downtown. Station Two, which is out on Herrick Avenue, is generally our least busy station. Station Three, which is on Henderson and Ocean Avenue, right near Broadway, is our second busiest. Station Four in Middletown, and then Station Five out across from Redwood Acres. And what you'll see through all of these is we definitely saw a little bump depending on the district that was served by the station during COVID quarter, which we started in, in March. And that generally affected our calls by about a 20% reduction specifically in medical aids and service calls as people began to lock down and didn't really, my speculation, want to burden the EMS system or be going to the hospital. So that's just a, an interesting graph to look at. And here's a, a total aggregate for the department through all four quarters. The final quarter, we did have to do some projections as we obviously still have two weeks to go. But it's trending about normal and you can see after that quarter two decrease, things quickly went up. And a lot of that was due to the wildland incidents and the smoke conditions, et cetera, that we were experiencing locally. And then if we look at comparison to the last five years, you can see we generally have been increasing. In 2019, we started a new records management system, which provides much more accurate record and processing of our information, which is one reason why we see a bit of an increase. But then in 2020, again, projecting the last two weeks, we see that decrease that was due to that 20% COVID effect in the second quarter. But we're generally trending upwards of 7,000 calls a year, which is pretty significant for such a relatively small community. So diving a bit more into COVID as its effect on calls as well as our personnel. We created a special data measurement within our records management system to measure COVID calls. And so far, there are 82 that are specifically related to COVID. How our firefighters would know that is either they are told that through dispatch by their information or the patient themselves will declare that when they get there. When we started the, the COVID situation, the county through the Sheriff's Office was providing the exposure data to the dispatch centers. When the numbers started improving around about September, they stopped that, that practice. And now we're just using the best information we can through our dispatches who do some medical screening when they. Some of you may remember of seven personnel to a patient who turned out to be positive, that dramatically changed our PPE requirements. And three of our personnel were quarantined, but none of them developed symptoms or became positive. Like most of the county, state and nation and world, the last month dramatically changed everything. We suddenly had two positive tests that were from an outside work exposure. They subsequently had four of our people exposed, all of them were isolated and quarantined. So that was a pretty significant and stressful thing. I know other departments in the city are experiencing the same thing as well as many businesses and it's, it has a very significant effect when we have to quarantine and it can potentially close stations and dramatically affect service. So I'm very thankful that we haven't had more negative effect like that. The pandemic was at a significant financial burden on, on us specifically in terms of hours of labor and then equipment that totaled about $181,000. We applied for reimbursement through the CARES Act and as most are still waiting on that. And I'm not sure when that, that may get reimbursed. We were able to secure thousands of PP items, so masks, gowns and different airway devices that, again, everybody's familiar with, was in very short supply. So we cleared out quite a few of the paint stores of their Tyvek suits. And as a quick side note, we got a call from a painting company last week asking if they could buy any from us because they were needing some and they'd heard that we had taken most of the supply. But we also worked with our county partners to continue to get that good supply so that we could prepare for the worst, which we're currently in with the third surge. We staffed between two and three positions in the county EOC from March all the way through October. That was all essentially labor that we donated or used through a mutual aid system. We had our PIR, Public Information Officer there all the way through October, she started three days a week down to Monday and that ended in October. We offered everyone viral and antibody testing in June and apparent approximately half our folks participated. And since then, we've expanded our testing to do internal testing specifically for exposures and taking away the contact tracing from the county, just so we can respond quicker to do that. And we still have expanded PP and response protocols to basically assume everyone has COVID and protect our firefighters with the highest level of protection on that. So in the months of COVID, like the rest of the world, many other significant things happened. In California, we had the most significant wildland fires. And usually we go to Southern, Northern California or the real Southern California. But in this case, the big fires and the biggest fire was affecting Humboldt County, specifically around the Ketten Palm and Ruth Lake area. So we generally will provide station coverage assistance to CAL FIRE where they will deploy all of their resources to the large incidents and then ask local government to backfill. That ended up being a three-month assignment for us. And that particular engine covered Wiatz Station, Trinidad, and then was also deployed to the August Complex, where we also sent out as a strike team for about 10 days. So that was again, a pretty huge commitment. But the biggest thing about the mutual aid system in California is all of us firefighters and fire agencies are ready to assist everyone else because the fires and the resources are insufficient in, to deal with those fires. And you never know when they may affect you. And that's the, the real intent of the system. And it was really felt this time where the firefighters in Ketten Palm were working with people initially from Santa Cruz. Then it became Texas and then it became as far away as Montana. So just a real significant event. We did get two new fire engines that was part again of a strategic replacement plan. They were purchased in 2019 by each parent agency. The city financed the purchase over seven years using the Joint Powers Authority Capital Fund that Director Malart worked with us to establish last year. And then the district was able to use their cap, their apparatus replacement fund along with the JPA fund to purchase that engine outright. And that was a huge thing to do as well as through those capital funds, really be able to look to the future and make good planned replacements over a 30-year period, which is something that's been lacking in the past. Both of these engines are in service at Stations Three and Stations Five. They are really working out well. The crews are benefiting from their capabilities and they look fantastic. So that's a good, good thing. I got to drive one, so they also drive really well, they let me do that. Uh, our training site, if you're not familiar with, is on Hillfuck Lane. We basically created a temporary structure about 10 years ago and have made no real improvements since then. We were able to secure around $200,000 through Measure Z through the Humboldt County Fire Chiefs Association to make some very needed improvements there. I took this picture yesterday, the biggest thing was the paving. This is a primary site, not just for our training, but it's, it became a county regional training site. And it's a great place to do hose deployments, as well as all the other firefighting things. Dragging wet hose through gravel over a three-hour period is, is really not great for the equipment. It is great training, but when it takes two hours to get the engines back in service, that wasn't very efficient. So having a paved site is a real big thing. We got this beautiful fence as well that will hopefully improve security and we're working on getting the tower itself painted. And all of those things don't just make that, that area along the Xari Trail more appealing to look at, but it definitely improves morale for the firefighters. And it's been a long time coming for this, this temporary structure we have. We made some great station upgrades to our city stations, some of which, for example, the carpet haven't been done in decades. The carpet that was there has been there when I first interviewed 22 years ago. So it was a good thing to replace it and it's, uh, it's holding up really well. We did painting of Stations Three and Four and we have further improvements planned. And again, all this was in cooperation with other city departments and City Manager Slattery, so it's just a great long-term project that we've been able to accomplish. So the, me talking about the highlights is not the thing I really want to share with you tonight. The biggest effect on COVID, as all of you know, is our lack of social interaction. Community engagement is a strong strategic goal for us. We had several plans in place to expand that this year and obviously we were limited in doing that. One of the highlights of the year is our open house, where invite the public to Station One and we've expanded that to our other stations. And that generally occurs in October, we weren't able to do that. But what we did do was create a, a video series to expose our stations and our firefighters to our community in a lot of fun ways. And I'm just really proud of the people that I work with and my, my fortune and privilege to serve them. And I think this video series, which is a collage of the, all the videos that were made that are on YouTube is really wonderful and I'm very happy to share it with you. It's about four minutes long and when it's over, I will take any questions you have. Thank you.
My name is Tony Freeman, I'm a fire captain with Humboldt Bay Fire. In light of the coronavirus, a lot of us has been locked down and sheltered in place. And we've not had our normal classrooms be able to come visit us at the stations and be able to see all the different kids that would normally happen during the school year. We've had some requests for a tour and we thought, hey, why don't we do a station tour virtually? So welcome to your mutual tour of Humboldt Bay Fire. A few of us play instruments as well, so. Yeah, after five or evening time, us three tonight, we got a, we have a jam session planned. Here we have some extra patient equipment. And we got these, these are pretty new ones, they're kind of cool. They're battery powered. Our other ones and all the other rigs, they're all hydraulic powered. These ones are battery powered, so they're quicker, so you just pop them out, you turn it right on. So you can go right out of the case there. We help people when they don't feel good, they're feeling sick, their tummy hurts. Or another way we can help people is if they have a pet or dog get stuck or if say your mom or your daddy are cooking and then they burn something and catch on fire. And that's what you could use one of these, the fire extinguisher. I'll show you how it works. Or trigger. And how you press the bulb, make sure it's working. And it should sound off again, letting you know that the one's working. If you don't know, we actually have a water rescue team that consists of 15 specialized rescue swimmers that we have here in the department. It is surrounded on three sides by water. We have the bay to the north and to the west of us. And then we also have freshwater creek and we also have Elk River down to the south of us. And so that leaves us open to a lot of potential for water rescue. We on average have anywhere between five to eight water rescues every year, sometimes more, sometimes less.
Pull up on a fire here. You're gonna pull this pin, you're gonna aim the nozzle here, you're gonna sweep the handle. To put that fire out. So remember, if you see a fire, call 911, if it's small enough, keep your fire extinguisher, otherwise it makes for a hell of a mess. You'd like to go with paramedics, the very first step, you're gonna start with TNT. That's Emergency Medical Technical School. You can apply with most community colleges and it's roughly about a four to five month course where you're gonna learn skills for basic life support. From that point forward, you may want to gain some experience volunteering with local fire department. Applying with a local ambulance company and working on your skills. Hope this has been helpful. I'm Tracy Pearl.
All right, thank you, that's the end of the slideshow. That last flossing dog costume that was procured by a grant we applied for and received recently. So we're pretty excited about that, hopefully we get to use it in the near future. Are there any questions? Yeah.
Ken Maraya? What is our current volunteer firefighter situation?
Our current volunteer firefighter situation is our, our volunteers, we have one active. We have four new applicants. They were pretty much ready to go in February. They, the process is generally, we take applications in October. The local Yellow River Valley Academy starts in March and runs for about four months. And then they, they go through a process where they become active to where they can ride on the, of the fire apparatus and respond to calls. But obviously COVID stopped that, the academy was stalled. But those four people are still very interested and active and they recently went back to the academy that restarted. And we're hoping to move them along. I will say that we're completely revamping or at least planning to our volunteer program to make it more of an internship. And so we have a lot of ideas that we're basically researching at this point to make it a different model to integrate more with the community and make it more of a pathway to a career with Humboldt Bay Fire.
Awesome, I know there have been several people who were formerly volunteers who are. Awesome. I know there have been several people who were formerly volunteers who are employed within the department. Which is, I love the idea of any way to kind of bring people in. But an internship sounds awesome.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Bregal.
Well, I just wanted to thank you for this presentation and also just wanted to really thank you for all that you do in our community. Because it's a lot, it's really a lot. And especially during these COVID times, I really oftentimes am concerned when I hear the sirens. I love the video, I love what you're doing with the department and onward. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your support.
So and I don't know Chief, if you met Scott Bauer, our new councilperson who has been assigned to the Humboldt Bay Fire. Committee. With councilmember Bregal, so he's going to be at your meetings from now on.
Yes, I haven't met councilmember Bauer personally. I'm rather familiar with members of his family. And what I will say is he he did come and speak to the union. So I'm excited to to meet him as well as council. Member Molton and give them a tour, maybe it's a virtual tour or we can do something, but at least. Give them a more insight into Humboldt Bay Fire and what a great partnership we have with the city.
That is right. I forgot I did that tour when I first started too. It's a good tour. Maybe we won't have to wait too much longer for it to be in person. A few months.
And I still owe city manager's lottery a ride in the ladder truck.
I think city manager's lottery should climb the ladder truck.
Maybe we can walk the skywalk first, so I can see how he handles the heights.
There you go. Just no skirt smiles.
If he does, make sure you get a video of it.
I'll put on that elf costume again.
Do we have any other comments? We always appreciate it when you come and visit Chief.
All right, thank you.
And city manager's lottery, do you have anything else you want to use your city manager time for?
I don't, I just want to thank Chief Robertson for everything he does. Everybody knows he's very modest, but that was him in the costume doing the flossing, so.
He looked a little short.
I really do, and it's they, I want to echo what councilmember Bregal says. It's they do a lot for our community and we do have a great partnership. And seems to me I've been here for a short period of time, but it does seem there's been a lot of structured fires recently, maybe. And I'm just getting noticed more of them, but they do a great job and it's great partnering with them. And Chief Robertson is going to teach me the floss sometime soon, but that's that's all I have.
We'll expect you to come back and demonstrate it to all of us. All right, with that, then it will be time for council reports. And and this is the time for council to talk about what they've been doing and what meetings they've gone to. How they have, if they've done any travel for council meetings. And we will start with councilmember Arroyo. You're the top one.
Oh, I'm taken aback. I never get to go first. Well, I I wanted to bring in the item for. Actually to see if there'd be interest in agendizing it, although it has become a little bit more moot. It, I'd like to. Consider asking, well, I'd like I'd like you all to weigh in if you would like staff to bring back information about. Just under better understanding the traffic impacts in Eureka from the proposed Richardson Grove. Changes, so the impacts of the STA tracks in coming through Eureka in particular. So I'm curious to know if other councilmembers would like that to just come back, because I'd like to hear information about that at a public meeting.
Councilmember Bregal.
So you just, councilmember Arroyo, are you speaking to just like a report from staff or?
Yes, just just information about not necessarily. At this, my vision at this time was just to understand the impact that those. That change would have on traffic in Eureka, not necessarily to. To do anything more than that at this time.
I would be interested in hearing that.
Especially since we're talking about transportation safety so much.
Do we have a consensus? Do we just need a majority to want it on the agenda and then we can direct staff to bring back a report? Yes. Comes up, all that works. Okay.
Okay, thank you. All right. And beyond that. I don't have much to report. Most of our meetings have been council meetings, so or at least for me in the last couple of weeks. I'll continue to be on Coast Guard duty through probably February or later next year. So just so all my new colleagues know and members of the public can maybe be watching. I'm currently on Coast Guard active duty orders and so I I've just been taking on that additional role. And so my daytime availability has been a little bit curtailed. But I continue to be serving in the same capacity in all of my city, wearing all my city hats. I there is some interest in in having a more broad discussion between multiple counties and jurisdictions about the Plymouth Dams. And how. You know, as as you all know, I serve on the Plymouth River renewal corporation board. And there's just more interest right now in. Ensuring that multiple counties and like cities have a voice in that effort. So I may be coming back to you with more of a request on that front to participate in some kind of conversations amongst local decision makers. So because it affects our local fishery and our local community in that way. That's at least the most direct impact, but there's lots of other. Other reasons why we might support and stand with folks on that effort. So I will bring back more information when I have it, but that's something that I anticipate talking to you more about in 2021.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Molton.
Well, I'm pretty new, so I don't have a ton to report. I'd like to say that I'm honored to be working with this group of them watching. I've been really impressed with the work the city council has done and I'm just so pleased to be to be here and to be a part of this team. So grateful for your welcome. And I'm glad I managed to limit myself to two alternate positions and one committee. My co-parent will be very happy about that. And then just a, is this is the appropriate moment to bring things to staff that I think should be discussed in the next agenda, is that correct?
Yeah, so you'll bring up an item that you would like to see on the agenda and then we have to have a majority agree that we want it to go on the agenda.
Well, I had a question about at the end of the the last special session, it seemed like there was potential for. Emergency mobile SEP services to be wrapped into COVID response. My understanding that there was something that the council could do to rapidly authorize mobile SEP services in the city of Eureka. As part of emergency COVID response.
I believe staff was already directed to bring that back. So when do you think you're going to do it, city manager's lottery?
So it's coming, it's going to come to council on the first meeting in January, January 2nd. And just for clarification, councilmember Molton, it's amending an emergency declaration that we made related to the pandemic. And we.
Thank you so much. I wasn't clear exactly what the procedural part of that was. So I don't have any direction then, that was just a question.
All right. Councilmember Bauer.
Thank you. Like councilmember Molton said, I'm honored to to work with you all. I think you've done so much really hard work for the city. That I appreciate what you've done and I look really look forward to working with you all. And I want to thank council, ex-councilmember Austin Allison, just for all the hard work he done, he's done. And I feel like I have some big shoes to fill, you know, following behind him. And I'm humbled by being able to work, you know, to continue his work and to serve the the fourth ward and. And the city as a whole. Yeah, like Katie said, you know, I haven't, not much to report really. I would like to see if, you know, next council meeting. I'd like to see the roads report essentially, you know, what's the status of all of our city roads? And we can start planning, what are we going to fix first? I mean, I heard that, you know, 100 times, you know, this past year, talking to people in the ward. So I think that'd be a really interesting thing to start looking at and yeah, go ahead.
Director, I see Director Gerving is still here. I know that we plan on bringing a CIP in a near meeting. And I think that would be a good venue to add it to, so he can give you kind of the background of the PMI and the PMS system and all those things associated with. And his pavement management system, but.
Say the other ones too, the other app and I'm sorry.
Management index, correct, Director Gerving?
PCI pavement condition index.
Oh, yeah.
Very close. Yeah, it will either be the, hopefully the first meeting in February where staff will bring the capital improvement program. And we anticipate before then having an idea of staff's recommendation as to what portion of measure eight monies could be allocated towards street improvements. And based on that, a list, you know, by year or by, you know, for the next several years of which streets we would recommend addressing. And that's a complicated effort because we have to look at underlying utilities, because we don't want to go and fix the street only to have to break into it. And repair water mains and things of that nature, but we do anticipate including that in the CIP presentation.
Excellent, thank you. And lastly, maybe this is something to discuss, I understand we're going to be doing strategic visioning in the future. I'd really like for us to include in that, you know, climate change discussion and. Given the state of of the world and this particular issue. I really think this is something that could be a standing agenda item, you know, what's the city doing? You know, what are we, can we do for our our citizens? How can we empower them to? You know, do things that reduce our carbon footprint so that city of Eureka is 100% renewable. And you know, as much as we can be in our in all of our aspects of our lives. So I'm looking forward to hopefully seeing that in the in the visioning session. So that's really it. Thank you. You're muted.
Sorry, my dog was making noises again. Councilmember Bregal.
So I just have a few things. First of all, welcome to our new council members. It's really exciting to have new people to work with, new ideas and that type of thing. If you have not been over through Sequoia Park lately, I would encourage you to do so. The CCC is working on the trails, you can't go on those yet, but the skywalk is it's it's amazing. Today I walked there and there was a guy actually hanging upside down with a line, working on the underneath part. I mean, it's just, it's really interesting to watch the whole production of it. And so we're looking really forward to that happening. I did, I'm on the board for CAPE and we did meet. And just a couple of things, you know, we were in the red status when we met, now we're of course in the purple. But some of the things have been suspended, pathways to payday has been suspended, obviously. The job skills has been suspended, but something that's really important that hasn't been suspended is the copilot situation. I've been doing copilot by phone and by Zoom and just really trying to reach out and bridge those connections is always so so critical. And just in our last meeting, there was discussed of four to five different households that have been housed through our CAPE program. So I think that, you know, I just really want to highlight that CAPE is doing a fabulous job. And then we did have our JPA meeting with the fire department with Humboldt Bay Fire and something that was really. I really appreciated is that they are bringing forward ideas about having incentives for bilingual firefighters. So that when there's somebody on a site that that they have somebody that that may or may not, you know, that may understand something that that someone else wouldn't. Because that can be a barrier and they're looking at not only Spanish, but also Mong and of course you have to be a firefighter. And tribal languages, so I just really appreciate that that they're working towards embracing the full community. And lastly, I would say shop local, have a happy holiday. I decorated my house last weekend because, you know, we got to bring the joy in somehow, thank you Mayor Seaman. I didn't enter the contest though. And wear your mask, wash your hands, social distance. Stay in your pods and be safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Castellano.
Let's see. We have been seeing one another quite a bit these days, but I still have been doing things outside of council. Let's see. Recently, in the last couple of weeks, participating in several meetings around housing. I'm part of a housing group through the COVID Economic Resilience Consortium. And we had a great presentation from Link Housing's Joey Shields. And to, and it was just nice to, you know, get into a little more depth about Link Housing's work in California as well as in. What's going to be forthcoming in Eureka. I also met with Art Space, just to kind of talk about ideas around artist housing. And and several weeks prior to that, I met with Place, which is another group that does artist housing. So this is something I'll, you know, I don't need counsel to weigh in right now, but I'll bring it forward during the strategic visioning is is just looking at. You know, whether or not we want to kind of identify different types of housing that we want to address within our housing needs. Sorry, my battery's dying on my iPad. Been meeting with some folks about tiny houses still and we're still preparing. Gosh, probably a month ago, I brought this up during my council report that that report from the tiny house group is still going to be coming forward sometime in the next month or so. January-ish. Yeah, working on some street outreach plans, attending board meetings. I attended the California Cow Ford Economic Summit and the there was a meeting specifically around regional advocacy efforts. That was great. And the Humboldt Creative Alliance meeting, oh, yeah, this Saturday, I am putting on the promenade of dreams. Which is kind of a long night celebration. Come out to Old Town, if you like, from six to nine PM and dress according to your dreams. And carry a lantern and or just observe other people doing that while you're shopping local. And supporting local businesses, so you know, the idea is to do something that inspires people to come to celebrate our lovely artsy quirky. Fantastically unique community. And I'm hoping that this becomes a yearly event that maybe will evolve to more of like procession slash parade. So that's again this Saturday, December 19th from six to nine PM. Feel free to reach out to me if you want ideas or anything like that. I am curious, you know, there's lots of things I would like to bring forward, but I'm just curious. When we're going to settle on those dates for a strategic visioning, because I don't want to like overwhelm staff, but I mean, you know, bring forward several things all right now before the. several things all right now before the holidays. Um, are we gonna settle on those dates pretty soon?
Well, yeah, assistant city manager Powell and I will reach out to Roger and Mary. One of the issues that some of our councilmembers had before was the way they had it set up, you know, prior to when we changed the direction and wanted to wait for the new council was that they had, I believe it was nine meetings um, that were set up. So we'd like to work with them to try and kind of limit that so that we can, yeah, get it done in a, a different way. So we're not having nine separate meetings. Um, so assistant city manager Powell and I will reach out to them. Hopefully have something we can bring back to the next city manager's report.
Great. And we're looking at like end of January, beginning of February, still kind of ideally loosely speaking.
That was the plan before, um, and Roger didn't want to set any dates um, right then because he didn't know it was gonna come up at that time. So we can reach out to him again.
Sure, great. Thank you. That's all for now.
All right. That was, uh, councilmember Bergell and then councilmember Arroyo.
So I just have a question, councilmember Castellano. Is it costume required on the 21st or is it costume optional or is it costumes at all?
Costume encouraged and it's on the 19th. It, you know, I decided to do it instead of doing it on solstice proper, to do it on the Saturday before solstice. Because I thought in terms of long-term planning, that may be the, a more reliable option to go. So it's the 19th Sat, the Saturday before the longest night. I love, I would love to see people wearing costumes personally.
Councilmember Arroyo, did you have something?
Yeah, there's something I forgot in my report, I'm sorry, but um, I, I, because um, it was on our consent calendar and we didn't have it for discussion, I just wanted to, in addition to um, welcoming the new councilmembers, to um, welcome our incoming planning commissioner Craig Benson. Um, and to thank Joe Benino for his years of service on the planning commission. Um, so really appreciate the role that they play and appreciate years of service done. And um, and Craig has also already served on um, on a city commission, the Open Space Parks and Recreation Commission. So much appreciation for that time and for the new role.
So we now have two spaces open on the Open Spaces Parks and Recreation Commission because that was also one that Scott Bauer served on. So if that's something that anybody is interested in, uh, fill out a commission application and send it over to me because I'll be appointing soon. Thank you very much. And with that, um, we will adjourn this meeting.
Thanks, everybody. Have a great week.
Bye-bye.
No more special meetings this week. All right, bye y'all.
See ya.
Bye.
I'll email you back.